I would like to call toward the meeting noticed for today. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Here.
Councilmember Udi?
Here.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Here.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Present. The agenda is posted 24 hours prior to each special meeting at the following locations. City Hall, the Crowell Public Library, and the Stoneman Building. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. The city welcomes public input. At this time, the public may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda. To ensure that everyone, including those joining us remotely, are able to hear the speakers clearly, please speak into the microphone. All comments are limited to two minutes and will be timed by city staff. I would now like to ask City Clerk Baker to explain how public comment will work.
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. We accept public comments in three ways. We will take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it in to me if you wish to speak on an item. We will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raised hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on Participants, and then clicking on Raised Hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please not use this feature until we have asked for public comment, or else we may not see it or know which item you're asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you would like to speak on this particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item. I will then read into the record any public comments received by email for that particular item. Due to technical limitations associated with gathering, printing, and sorting emailed public comment, the city has instituted a 3:00 PM cutoff the day before Friday city council meetings for emailed public comments. This is to ensure there's sufficient time to gather and present the emailed comments at the city council meeting. Any comments received after 3:00 PM the day before a Friday city council meeting will be included in the public comment record but will not be read at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I will pause a moment and acknowledge that Councilmember Huang is present. Does anyone here wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, do we have any public comment requests electronically?
Just giving one moment to see if there's raised hand. No request for comment at this time.
Thank you. Let's move on then to new business. May we please have a presentation from Chief Nkontrou? Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I am here to provide a update on our plan in the event of loss of personnel to the police department. And the latest plan is one, we were researching several things, and we were looking at cities across the county. One city in particular, the city of Beverly Hills, has developed tactics and a business partnership with security officers from two different companies in Los Angeles County. And what they do is they supplement the patrol forces for regular observe and report patrol. They can do footbeats, and they have been doing footbeats in the Rodeo Drive, Rodeo Drive area of Beverly Hills, and have assisted them with some of their demonstrations and civil unrest events within the city. I looked at three different companies. And one company, Shaw Seagraves and Associates, dropped out. The other two companies are Covered Six and NASTEC, N-A-S-T-E-C. The important thing before I go on to talk about is, security officers, although they are licensed by the state to be armed, they receive self-defense training, they receive certification and training to use a baton. They do not supplement, they do not do the job of a police officer. They merely supplement what the officers do. They are able to observe and detect, they'll be in vehicles rolling through the city. There'll be a supervisor who'll be working with another security officer, and then another vehicle with two security officers. And those vehicles will drive around, will be giving them some assignments of places to focus on. They can do footbeats along Huntington, near the schools, along Mission. If we have a specific problem with loitering or issues around the library, we could give them that assignment. If we have an event where we are doing a search for maybe a suspect, they can assist on traffic control. They can also, if we make an arrest and the person has a vehicle that is going to be impounded, they can complete that report for us, so that saves up some time for the officers. And they can also do transportation of a suspect that we arrest to pass it in the police department for a booking, which cuts down on some time and allows the officers to get right to their investigation and complete their report. So the security officers will reduce the time that the officers will be tied up with other normal operations and allow them to get back to their regular patrol. I think an important distinction also is, an officer has the ability through the law to determine a reasonable suspicion. I think it's Terry versus Ohio. I can remember my lot from way back when. And that's where an officer sees something suspicious. And generally, the definition is closed business, walking around. We've had crimes in that area before. The person seems to be loitering near a window, near a door, may have a tool in their hand or nearby. And we believe that they could be in a process of attempting a burglary or some other kind of crime. And we, police officers, have the ability to stop, talk to the person, whether it is based upon reasonable suspicion, probable cause, or we can do a consensual encounter where we ask, hey, can I talk to you for a minute? And generally, most people say, yeah, sure. So those are the things they can't do, but they sure can help us as a great witness, a great community member who's been witnesses for crimes in tell us. But they're not going to pursue the suspect, they are not going to engage the suspect. With that in mind, before I continue, as a Los Angeles Unified School District graduate, my math skills are much less than they should be. And I want to make a, I want to make a correction on page 22. There's a chart dealing with the cost and the total cost, including a vehicle. So they'll be, both companies will offer three security officers and a supervisor, plus two vehicles every 12 hours. So the total will be six security officers, two supervisors, and four vehicles every 24 hours. And the total cost is $1,790,762 for NASTEC. And that includes all eight of the personnel and a vehicle for 24 hour, four vehicles for 24 hours. So on the correction, so it would be corrected on Table 1 and Table 2.
Can you repeat that, please, Chief?
The numbers?
The new number, the new total.
Yes. The total amount is $1,790,762. And the way I got there, if you want to check my math, is I took, if you look at the chart on page 22, the first two rows has lead armed security officer Monday through Sunday, 0600 to 1800, which is 6:00 PM, one lead security person. And that block below it with the same time with three, and I doubled that. And then I looked below at patrol vehicles, which is daily, and four added that and came up with that number. The, that the staff recommends the council approve the temporary security officer contract safety program as a method to supplement public safety in the city. If the city council concurs with the staff's recommendation, the appropriate motion would be to move the, to authorize the city manager to select a vendor and enter into a not-to-exceed three-year contract for the next three years if needed, subject to final language approval by the police chief, city manager, and city attorney, and appropriate up to $340,600 from general fund reserves for each month. And that account is 103-30-4150-000, other contract services. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you for your report, Chief. We will have questions from Council, Councilmember Udi.
Questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney?
Thank you, Mayor.
Certainly.
I do have a question in your report. When you make a recommendation as to choosing between our considerations for Covered Six versus NASTEC, putting aside the financial for the moment, you speak in the middle of page six about additional foundational services that you recommend or appreciate that Covered Six is offering, as opposed, and I just wanted to understand what those are or the community to understand those.
The main difference between the two, they're both very good companies. They work for Beverly Hills Police Department on contract, and I've spoken to their chief, Mark Stainbrook, several times about this, and in fact, he and I spoke, and he was the one who recommended either company. Covered Six employs off-duty and retired police officers. NASTEC does not necessarily recruit those as much, but they do have retired and some off-duty police officers. Covered Six also has a training facility in the city of Moore Park in Ventura County that allows them to do a lot of additional training with their personnel. They seem to have the ability to develop new tactics and then be able to train their people quicker and with their own training facility. Both companies know each other, both companies work together. So it is just merely, it'll be who's available, it will be, and then maybe the cost. But I have confidence in either company to provide us the best service possible.
Thank you, and one more question. I believe that I saw in the Covered Six attachment, which was their quote, if you will, to you, a proposal that they have Mandarin-speaking officers, and they will provide them to us, at least one a shift. Is that correct, or?
They will do their best. And NASTEC said they will look for someone who speaks Mandarin. I actually know the person who speaks Mandarin for Covered Six, he worked for me when I was with LAPD. And they will do their best to keep them, and additionally, everyone will be vaccinated.
Thank you, for both.
Yes.
Covered Six and NASTEC.
Yes.
You confirmed that. Thank you, those are my questions, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Huang.
So from what you were saying earlier about the Mandarin-speaking officers, are they like retired police officers, or are they the ones that they don't want to become a police officer?
The one person that I know who does speak Mandarin is a retired police officer.
And what kind of vehicles, is it their vehicles, or is it ours?
Their vehicles, they drive Suburbans with the company logo on the side, each side on the door. And then they also have amber lights. Both companies have similar vehicles and markings.
Do I just stop if they pull me over for speeding?
No, they cannot stop you for speeding.
Thank you.
They can tell us.
Know where your votes go.
They could, they could tell you, us, you're speeding.
And they could follow you home, Councilmember. Tell your wife.
And the budget for this, so is this on top of the police department budget? Extra, I mean, are we saving from the officers that they leave, and then we use that money to pay for this? Or can we discuss this?
There may be some salary savings that we can use, but remember, at the same time, we're going to be doing a very intensive recruitment and hiring. If we hire people who have not been to the police academy, that's an increase than when we hire people who have already attended the police academy or are laterling from another agency as one of the officers we started last week.
Great, thank you, I have no more questions.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes, one question off the point of these. Are we increasing our flock coverage, too?
Yes, indeed, we added nine more cameras, and they are already installed.
Okay, great. How do they communicate? Let's say that we have one of these officers out. They see a crime occurring. How do they communicate? Is it, I see that the executive leadership is available via direct cellphone, but how would one of these officers communicate to the police station that they're witnessing a crime to get one of our officers out there?
They will have one of our radios, they'll be coming to our roll calls, that's why their shift times are the same as ours.
Okay. Thank you, I have nothing for, thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Thank you, I have a few questions. I see that Cover Six talks about their facility opening in 2020, but how long has each been in business?
I don't have the exact time, the amount of time, but I know they've been working for Beverly Hills for at least two years or more. I know Covered Six has been working, or has been operation for at least 10 years, and NASTEC is probably similar.
Okay, so it's a significant amount of time for both.
Yes, neither one of these is a brand-new startup.
Thank you. I'm sorry, as I flip around to get my other.
While you flip around, can I ask one more question? I circled, in the, in the Cover Six report, there are some numbers at the bottom, PPO number, and then I imagine the DUNES numbers, DUNES, Bradstreet, and then the BCIS facility code. What are those numbers?
The PPO is the number that they have as security officers, it's a state number that they have, and then the DUNES number is actually a grant number.
Oh, and what about the BCIS facility code?
BSIS is the Bureau of Security, it's a state board that oversees private security companies.
Do we know if NASTEC has those same?
Yes.
Licensors, okay.
Yes, it did.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to keep magical thinking that maybe we won't have to use this, but I've noticed Covered Six requires a contract of a minimum of one year. What about NASTEC?
They also want the same kind of contract, but I've spoken to the principals of both companies. They understand our position. And they understand that as we increase the number of sworn officers, that there will be a decrease in the number of security officers we will need. They, both of them have the ability to supplement with additional officers, for example, based upon our deployable personnel, the number of officers that we have July 4th. We could ask for additional officers from these companies to help us with traffic control and even some perimeter control to ensure park vehicles are safe around the park, those kind of things. But they're both very flexible.
Okay, that's helpful to hear. Speaking about indemnity, am I correct in presuming that both companies, should one of their persons be injured on the job, would be responsible for handling their own workers' comp and any subsequent issues?
Yes.
Okay, and are you aware if either company has had any lawsuits or any legal issues in the last two, three years?
No, I'm not. I could certainly find that out.
That would be helpful. That is the end of my questioning. At this point, I'd like to open up for public comment. I don't believe there's anyone here who's wishing to speak, correct? And do we have anyone online?
Just giving one moment for folks to have a chance to raise their hand. I'm not seeing any, no comments on this item.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to bring it back to Council, I just want to confirm Council has no more questions, correct? We will then go into discussion, Councilmember Udi.
Thank John for the work he's been doing on this whole issue, so thank you, John.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney.
Thank you, Chief Nkontrou. And I do want the community to know that this is not necessarily what any of us wants, but I believe that to be most protective for our community during interim period, we need to consider these options. And I appreciate that you've given it a great deal of thought and time, as well as, you know, your commanders, and did a very good job researching such a temporary, if you will, assistance and coverage for remaining police officers, so that our force will stay strong and our community will be protected. And it sounds like, from what I've read and seen here, having former police officers, as well as former military police by and large, at these two security companies, I believe that we'll get professionals who will do a good job, as well as their ability to attend those changeover staff shift meetings with their leadership and communicate with our radios directly. I believe that that's very important, and so I appreciate that they're coming to do that. And you've taken it upon yourself to make sure that those things happen, so that there can be some sort of seamless working relationship, if you will, during the time period that we need the most. So thank you for bringing this forward.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang?
Yes, Chief, I also want to thank you for your work, but I'm sorry I cannot support this because of my stance on the, you know, this mandate. Yeah, I mean, the pandemic is over, and, you know, this is, this doesn't make sense to me, so anyway, thank you.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes, I concur with the comments to those on my right. And I realize this is not a choice that any of us want, but we've gone ahead and decided to enforce the mandate, which has been in existence for, since August of '21. And we have to do something to continue to protect our, our community because of this unfortunate situation. And I want our police officers to know that our selection of a company is of no, is not a comment on them, it's what we feel is necessary to, to protect if, if, if they should decide not to get the vaccine. And I wish we weren't in this situation, but I really appreciate, because I know, and we've discussed the hard work that you've done, that's gone into this, to, to do, to do this, and that we've had a couple of hiccups on the way trying to find officers from other communities to, to work here as well. And so I, I'm going to support this wholeheartedly and continue to work with the police department and the security that we select. The, we are not selecting one or the other today. That will eventually be decided, but I see this as an absolute necessity, and I, and I, and I I do believe that this will provide the protection that our community needs during what may be a troubling time. Thank you, John.
You're welcome, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, for your quick turnaround on this effort. And I'd like to echo Vice Mayor Talt. We value every one of our police officers. And should they have to have this joint coverage, it is my presumption and hope that this will work in harmony and that we will have effective coverage for the residents of our city. And I too support the motion as written. Would someone like to make a motion, please?
I move to authorize the city manager to select a vendor and enter into a not-to-exceed three-year contract for the next three years as needed, subject to final language approval by the police chief and city attorney. I don't know why there's a second city manager, and appropriate up to $340,600 from general fund reserves each month for the remainder of this fiscal year as needed to account 103-30-4150-0000, parenthetical, other contract services.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Huang?
No.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number two is the presentation of the fiscal year 2223 proposed operating budget by department. May we please have opening remarks from City Manager Marlowe and Director Chung, please?
Yes, good morning, Council. Thank you so much, we are here to continue the budget process for our next fiscal year, 2022 to 2023. We are beginning the stage where you have a study session to evaluate the departmental budget presentations. I, Finance Director Chung and I both agreed that we compressed the schedule a little bit this year, and we didn't really mean to. So if it has felt compact and rushed, that's because it was. Last year, we also did two meetings, which we are intending to do this year as well. But the first of the two meetings was your regular April meeting, and the second meeting was the first meeting in May. So we flipped that this time and moved it up by a week or two weeks, depending on your perspective. So we have all been feeling the pressure, I know this is a lot of material to review, and this is, of course, one of the most important things that you do as a city council. So thank you so much for all of your time. And of course, I appreciate all the time of Finance Director Chung, the finance liaisons, and the executive team as a whole, plus all of our employees who contributed to this budget. What we'll be doing today is, I'll be turning it over momentarily to Finance Director for a high-level presentation. He'll ask the budget and finance liaisons if there's anything that they want to add. And then we'll come back and start the ever-important PowerPoint presentation with some high-level discussion, and then going into each department. What we have for you this morning is the hope that we are able to get through all of our departmental budgets, with the exception of FIRE, although the ever-popular Chief Donaville is here this morning. Chief Rueta is away at a conference today, and so we're going to wait until next week to do his budget. And then Community Services, there's lots of twists and turns in the Community Services budgets. There are many pieces to it, and we're still putting it together as a result of the revisioning, so that also is next week. Hopefully, we'll be able to get through everybody else today. This also means that you will have the opportunity to not just see the name and the photo of our interim Public Works Director, Robert Newman, but you will actually get to see him live and in person, who is sitting out in the audience, and he'll be up when it's time to do the Public Works presentation. I will ask you to be gentle with a few of us. Obviously, Mr. Newman was not the person who put this budget together, but he'll be the one presenting it to you today. Also, Finance Director Chung will be presenting the HR budget to you today, which was not entirely expected, but with all of his good spirits, he is jumping in as well. And I actually will be presenting the admin budgets today. We were hoping that Community Engagement Manager Quadras is going to do that, but she's a little sick bug this week, so we thought it'd be safer for me to just go ahead and present that, so we'll be doing that. One little tweak that I just want to let you know about is the presentation that you just heard and just approved. Thank you very much for that support. That contract is not included in next year's operating budget for PD in your documents today. Given your approval of this today, if we do in fact end up needing to deploy that agreement, we will be working that into the budget, but just, just a note, in case you're wondering, you won't see it in the presentation today, so just a little heads up about that. So again, I appreciate everybody's hard work on this. This is a long and time-consuming and energy-consuming process, and we appreciate everybody's, everybody's willingness and sometimes enthusiasm. And with that, I will turn it over to Finance Director Chung.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, City Council, this morning. I know this document is rather thick and a lot of information. So I will provide the high-level detail in the beginning, and then I'll pause, take questions on the overall budget itself, and then the department heads will come up and present their, their budgets. Before I begin, I wanted to thank the finance liaisons for their time, their direction, their recommendations. With our multiple meetings, we've helped the process together jointly to, to improve the process over the years. I really appreciate their time. I know they took a considerable time just going through the weeds with me, so thank you very much for your time as well. Also, we met with the Public Safety Commission, the Library Board, who presented the budget to them as well. So I appreciate their time. Of course, the City Manager, her and I are back and forths regards to the budget, our late nights, so I appreciate her time as well. And lastly, I won't be here without the help of the, the directors sitting there and their analysts that have long nights. that have long nights too as well drafting this together. So I really appreciate all their efforts. With that said, let me begin my presentation here. I'll provide the council an overall year-end summary. I'll provide the 2122 year-end summary regards to how I believe the, we will end the fiscal year at. And then I'll provide the overall 2223's budget. And then we'll go into the department heads' individual budgets. But before I begin into the details, I want to turn it over to Finance Liaisons for any beginning remarks before I begin.
Want to thank Paul, Mark and staff for the, for the effort in this. And I think the document we have is, you know, very transparent and very clear. And it's nice to see, you know, for each department, the purpose, the description, what was accomplished last year, what it cost to accomplish that, and what the major objectives are for this year, and what the budget will be to, you know, accomplish the, the goals. And then also to see some of the key operating metrics. I think we get the chance to see what we're going to get for the dollars we're going to invest back into the community. So, you know, Paul and team, thank you for your patience and sticking to the process. Appreciate it. I think it's a great product. And I also think the city is in great financial shape. I mean, we're, have traditionally been a strong financially solid city. And I think under Paul's leadership or, you know, even improving more. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I echo those thoughts, of course, and give special thanks to Paul and Mark. And what I love is each year it becomes more streamlined, yet transparent. And your command of the detailed line items is wonderful. There's no longer questions we can ask that can't be answered. And, and that really is comforting in knowing that we can let the citizens of our community know that we understand the budget, we believe in it, and we feel that we have full command of what we are approving. So thank you again. And that is my thought.
Great. Thank you very much. And let me begin regards to our year-end summary. So fiscal year 2220, 2122, our current fiscal year ends June 30. The departments, I've worked with the departments regards to what they anticipate their revenues would be and also their expenditures. Overall, we're anticipating our expenditure, our revenues to come in at $33.2 million. And our expenditures to be $26 million. The reason for, if you compare that to our current budget that was adopted by council, you do see expenditures coming in quite a bit lower than what we anticipated. And that really is because of the various pandemic closures. In the beginning, of course, in the fiscal year, also back in January, when Omnicrom, we had to stop some of our programming for, for the public as well. So our expenditure side, we do see our expenditures coming in lower than what we anticipated on the budget. Overall, though, on the net income, we do anticipate it to be close to $7.2 million. Of course, this ink hasn't dried, meaning the fiscal year continues to progress till the end of the fiscal year. So this number will fluctuate. And the reason this net income is quite high at 7.2 is because Mark and I, the accounting manager and I, we met regards to how do we want to record the ARPA money, the $3.1 million stimulus money coming from President Biden. We've, we've collected the first portion of it, 1.5 million this year. The next portion, the final portion is coming next fiscal year. But regards to timing, we wanted to bring or carry most of that revenue into this fiscal year so that when you spend federal funds over $750,000 in a fiscal year, more than 750,000, that automatically triggers a, what they call a single audit, a CFA audit. Instead of having that span over two fiscal years, we believe that if we can move as much of that ARPA money to this current fiscal year and record that this year, then we would only have to conduct one audit this year. So we decided to push majority of that ARPA money to this fiscal year. So that's why you do see a higher net income being that the revenues are higher than anticipated because of this ARPA money. Wanted to provide the council just a summary of our fiscal impact due to the pandemic. Back in 2020, we received our first federal stimulus of $181,000 through the CARES Act. We also, as I mentioned, the ARPA money, the $3.1 million, we will be collecting the final payment in, in July for that ARPA funds. And so far, year-to-date, we spent $403,000 in COVID-related expenditures. Those are PPE items, rapid tests. Also, legal expenses are all combined into this $403,000. As I mentioned, during this fiscal year, we had decreased revenues because some of the closures, community services, as they didn't perform their, their services due to the, the facility's being closed or programs not being offered because of the pandemic. We do see some revenues on the sales tax side, investment income and parking citations at the beginning of the year that we still feel today regards to decreased revenues. But also that is, is offset by the expenditures being a lot lower as what we projected. Looking forward, though, to next year, we do expect COVID, as we're hoping there won't be a resurgence, of course. And that, that is reflected in the budget, meaning we didn't include $195,000 of COVID budget money into next year. So we do see that decrease on the budget side for next year. On the revenue side as well, we do expect many of our revenues to actually be at the pre-pandemic levels. Our plan check revenues, our permit revenues, they've all are showing signs that we are at that pre-pandemic level due, due to the demand from the residences here in the community. Community services as well as the programs continue with no closures, we do expect their revenues to hopefully reach pre-pandemic levels as well next year. And that's built into next year's budget. Lastly, just wanted to add that comparables is difficult, being that the last, as long as I've been here, this is my third budget with, with council here. But it's been under COVID. And looking back, we, we provide two years' worth of actuals, but that's all been under COVID. So it's, it's very hard to look comparably what we did last year. And even looking forward, being that we're as a, looking forward into the future, we're projecting no COVID. So that comparison to why is the budget going up by X amount is a hard comparison to what we did in the past because of the fact that we're assuming that we will be at a pre-pandemic level next year. Just wanted to keep that, just to bring that up to the council. I want to move on to our overall fiscal year 2223 proposed budget before you. I did on Thursday sent a revised table regards to overall revenues and expenditures. There were some changes, last-minute changes that were made, being that we were tightening up community services department's budget. And so that had a ripple effect, of course, to the overall budget. The overall budget did decrease, but both revenues and expenditures. But I wanted to let the council know. And it was also posted online for the public to see regards to the changes. Regards to revenues for next year, I am forecasting that we will be $35 million in revenues overall. That'll be a 3.1% increase. As I mentioned, that includes just half a million of the ARPA. And the reason for that half a million instead of the other half portion that I mentioned, the 1.3, is because council has approved in their CIP plan a half a million dollars for the HVAC project that was going to be utilizing ARPA funds. So I wanted to make sure the revenue part of that is reflected next year. So half a million dollars is reflected in these revenues. We do forecast 6% in property taxes to increase. And now we historically been at 4% to 5%, but we've after analyzing our overall property taxes, it seems like it's going to be coming in slightly higher at 6%. So that's included with the budget as well. And I mentioned, many of our revenues are expected to be at the pre-pandemic levels. Plan check, building permits, a lot of our charges for services such as revenues coming in from library and recreation. We do expect that to be somewhat at the level of a pre-pandemic level as well. And that's, of course, included in your budget packet. Moving on to the expenditure side, I know there's a lot of movements regards to some one-time monies or budgets that are not rolling over to next year. There's also some asks from the departments regards to some of the budget items for their services for next year. But overall, our expenditures next year is $30.1 million. It's an increase of 3.4% or a million-dollar increase next year. We want to break this overall expenditures really into two categories, personnel costs and of course, services and supplies. On the personnel side, as I, as the table shows here, we are expected to increase 2.4%. I wanted to highlight to council that this does not include, of course, the outcome of the meat and comfort process as we're entering that process. So whatever that outcome is, I'll be coming back to council regards to any amendments to the budget. So this 2.4% increase in personnel cost is really, most of it is in contractually obligated amounts, pension costs that's embedded in there. And of course, our step increase sort of various staff, and that contributes to some of that increase. And then the remaining portion is what the department is asking for in their budget next year. A half, a 0.5 increase in FTE for a senior planner, which the Community Development Director will be presenting later. That's converting a part-time senior planner into a full-time senior planner. And that costs is $70,000 in the budget. Aquatics, as council directed staff, that's 2.22% or sorry, 2.22 FTE increase for the aquatics positions. And then lastly, just a 0.04 FTE increase for park attendants to adjust for their hours working at the parks. And then on the services supply side, there are certain requests from the departments that you'll see in their presentations. 86.868,000 is elections as we're going into elections next year. And then we also see a $90,000 increase in plan check consulting services that the Community Development Department is requiring or are requiring, requesting for next year. And then we also include the Community Services Department's proposal for their re-envisioning for next year as well. And that we will be discussing more detail on that item next week. With that said, also on the services and supplies, you do see inflation as, as inflation is just cost of doing business. We've, I've seen it in the utility side, 3% to 7% increases on utilities. We are also focusing on staff development and training next year. You'll see that in our, our budget as some of it is just backlog of training due to the pandemic. But also, we want to emphasize investing into our current staffing for that. We want to make sure that they're, they're getting adequate training to provide the services. And we want to, we included that in next year's budget as well. With that said, the overall budget for next year revenues is $32.3 million. And that's an increase of 3.1%. Expenditures are $30 million, increase of 3.4%. So the net anticipated net income is $2.5 million next year. Went to show this chart here. Overall, the blue line on top is our revenues. We've been, San Marino has been very fortunate through this pandemic. As you can see on the blue line above, many agencies, that blue line actually dipped below their expenditures, meaning they didn't bring in the revenues that they needed to cover their expenditures. So many agencies had to stop or freeze hiring certain programs they had to stop. But San Marino continued as our revenues continued to be robust. And I anticipate that to continue into next year. On the expenditure side, expenditure sides are increasing as, as you see that peaking next year. And the reason for that is really the last two years, we've been suppressed because of the pandemic. And we haven't, we had salary savings regards to the program closures. So we see that decrease in the prior years, but we should be at that pre-pandemic level on the expenditure side. So you see that increase there. Overall, I want to highlight on the bottom line is just the net, net income or the surplus remaining at the end of the year. As I mentioned, I do expect us to be at 7.2 million at the end of this year and then a 2.5. So over the next two fiscal years, you're looking at close to $10 million of potential surplus that the city should have. So we are overall, as, as Councilmember Udi mentioned, in a very good financial condition moving into next year as well. With that said, that is my presentation on my side. I'll turn it over to council for any questions and also open up for public comments for the budget. And then we'll turn back to department budget presentations. Thank you.
Thank you very much for this high-level summary. At this point, I'm going to request from council members any general questions concerning what we have just heard. Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question, Director Chung. Thank you very much for all your work. And I, I can't even imagine what your week or two weeks or month has been. So just so I understand, when you have the year-end 2021, 22 year-end summary, and in that there's expenditures of 25, almost, well, basically 26 million. But then when I go, I guess it's a couple pages later, and we are, I like to, on page five of this document, so it's the 2022, 2023 proposed. And in there, there's the same section, you call it amended, 2021, 2022 numbers. And in that, it has a different number there. And so it was just a proposed expenditures. So I'm trying to understand what else, why the two don't match, because it's a a large difference to have a $6 million or $4 million increase versus, you know, if we were to go from the 25, or I'm sorry, let's call this 26 of the actual year-end summary, right, that you're kind of projecting into 30,000, 30 million, excuse me, for next year, as opposed to the 29 million that is listed on this page as the amended expenditures to 30. That's only a million-dollar change. And while I understand obviously COVID, et cetera, there's a lot of smaller factors, but I just wanted to get the big picture difference of why the numbers are so different and, and what accounts for that difference. Thank you.
So what you're referring to is what the current amended budget is, the expenditure budget is $29.1 million versus what we anticipate to end the fiscal year at $26 million. So there's that $3 million variance between the two. Really, yes, it is due to the pandemic. We had quite a bit on the personnel side. We do anticipate some large savings there. And so that really is probably contributing about 50% of that number is really personnel. And then, of course, on the services and supply side, just the programming, as I mentioned, we're not spending what we anticipated. What, what other agencies do at times is they actually go in mid-year, they will amend the budget down to reflect what they believe that they're going to spend. We didn't do that. I just felt that we have the amended budget. We knew that we weren't going to exceed the appropriation that the council has authorized. We went ahead and just kept the budget unchanged for the most part. We did make smart, certain amendments, but overall, we didn't make the salary adjustments down, services supplies down to reflect what we thought we were going to end the year, because we knew that we weren't going to exceed that appropriation. Hopefully, that answered your question.
Kind of, but that's still a significant difference. So I appreciate and understand what you're saying. So the, the number that's reflected in the 2021-22 year-end summary is actually what we have spent because of both staff changes and reduction in other departments, let's say, because of COVID-related.
Yes, that's staff's best projection of what we would be spending by fiscal year end.
Okay. And then so tied into that is your discussion of ARPA. So I understand how, and I appreciate that you're being thoughtful, that we only have to have one audit. So money is going to be, that money when we receive it will be, we've already spent the 1.5 that we receive or not spent, but we already have planned expenditures to account for that, as well as it looks like everything except for $500,000, which will be the remainder in next year's budget. And so I'm just wondering, is that all expenses related? They have to be related to COVID. But does that cover some other things that we're doing in the city to use that money between now and year end?
Yes. Excellent question, Councilmember. So what, what I'll be doing is coming back to council regards, just update regards to how we're going to utilize these ARPA funds. As you are aware, we've spent 400 or so thousand life-to-date of COVID-related expenditures. This ARPA money over the, over, probably over the year, their guidance changed quite a bit. And now their guidance is basically, here's the money, anything below $10 million, which we are receiving 3.1 of. You can record it to your revenue as revenue received. And it should be expended on COVID-related items. But basically, they're saying that just tell us where you're spending this money. And so being that half a million for next year is strictly related to the And so being that half a million for next year is strictly related to the HVAC. We move in the remaining monies into this fiscal year and so that we can state that we spent ARPA money. On X expense or the expense is based on these items. And I will be coming to council to to make sure that we're we are on the same page regards to what expenditure. We are going to be utilizing these ARPA funds. At the end of the day, it all comes into our, what we call bucket of money. And then whatever's left left over or the net, we can, of course, move it into CFP fund if council directs that as well.
Right. So I'm I'm just thinking brainstorming here because that is a significant amount to kind of push out or if you would expense by the end of the year. And I'm thinking some of the improvements, like the HVAC change that we're making to city facilities. And I'm even thinking of the audio visual. I don't know how much it'll be for the library and those changes that we talked in there. Because obviously that has to do with broadcasting our meetings as well as serving. Our community better in that space at the existing library improvements. So there seems to be some things, but we're not necessarily going to have the RFPs or the numbers by July. Especially given the circumstances of Director Throne leaving. So I'm wondering if it might be better to push the majority of it into next year. So then we can account for more of it as those numbers firm up for the projects that we anticipate doing, even in the sense. For this structure and some of the expenses that might be necessary when we improve or renovate this. They would also qualify for those funds because they are related to that type of community safety, obviously. And this would require a great deal expense on the HVAC, on the lighting, on the sound. Even putting in broadcasting for future meetings for our community. So there's a lot of sunk costs that we're going to have in this structure as well. And I'm just, don't anticipate that we'll be at the position by July, is it July 1st? To know those realistically. So I don't know, is there? And so I'm just supposing that to just do one audit, maybe the next year might be the one audit and you could push it off. But I just want us to consider that fully, though I appreciate that you've thought it out. Just how we can best spend that money for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further?
That's all on this section. Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Huang?
No, I don't have any question, but thank you, Director Chung. Thank you.
Councilmember Udi?
Yeah, Paul, there is one bond that we still have outstanding. How much is that payment and when is that going to be paid off?
It'll be paid off in 23, 24 and that bond payment annually has been half a million dollars.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Tom?
I, yes, first of all, thank you so much, Director. And I would imagine that the the councilman Wong agrees with the fact that we've come very far since the first budget that we saw. And the process that we endured in 2016 and 17 and the changes started with. Josh and 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 now we're at a place where you could trust the information that you receive. And I appreciate the the finance liaisons as well that. It it comes through in a matter that's understandable to to someone like me and I really, really appreciate this. I do have some questions. First of all, the 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 6%. That you use in determining the revenues. You said that's, is that based exclusively on? This year's tax increase or or tax revenues? Or are there some projections that you're making in that other than the revenue itself?
So when you refer to the 6%, the 6% of 6% is only on the property tax increase. Overall revenues are increasing by 3.1%.
Yes, I apologize.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure. And if your question is, how do I get that 6% increase?
Yes.
Yes. So on the property tax side. Regards to what what I do is. I look at regards to how many homes were sold last year. Because that gets assessed into our property tax revenues next year. And so from what the feedback I got was that we've had. The highest sales of homes, 183, I believe, was the amount of homes reassessed at the higher value. At the new market value. So we see that next year. So just kind of straight lining what's anticipated. To be very conservative in my revenue numbers, we came up with 6%.
That's fantastic work. Usually people just stuck in a a old projection that they used. And this seems like it's based upon real facts and and I appreciate that. To what extent has has there been any? Reflection of inflation and anticipated inflation in our budget expenditures?
Yes. I think first and foremost, just utilities, we've seen increase in utility, electricity rates have gone up 10.5%. Gas is another area, working with, I don't know if that answers your question, but. Just across the board, just gasoline has gone up, as you know. Materials generally has gone up. It's hard to procure items, but also at the same time costs have gone up. So there is, that is reflected in next year's budget.
It it and from a standpoint where you're saying that, are you saying that in anticipating next year's budget? Gas may be, or let me retract that. Are you saying that you're using numbers today? In April of 2022 and using those numbers in in developing next year's budget? Or are you anticipating next year's budget further inflation?
I see. We are using, going back to your first point, we are using what we know today, the data today. And adding an inflation factor to that number and then and proposing that next year.
And what inflation factor are you using?
As I mentioned, it depends on what item it was. It's mainly in, well, it's all in services and supplies. So for instance, utilities for in finance department, we I oversee the utilities, electricity utility. That's in going up by 7%. So I use that 7% inflator into that particular line item. Certain departments and public works reached out to gas company and they knew that what percentage they've used. And I believe they use 5% increase to their that particular line item. So it it really depends on what budget line item. But we went through the weeds to figure out what we're spending this year. How much is the rate going up next year and using that rate to project our budget for next year?
So how much of the increase that I'm looking at? The operating budget, when I'm looking at the the service and supply is on page 27. At 5.5% change, how much of that do you think is is inflation? And how much of that is just requests for certain items in the department budgets?
So I don't have the actual figures with me, but the 5.7% increase, that equates to $506,000 increase in our service supplies. Of that, the last calculation, we're close to $72,000 of that was inflation related.
Okay, thank you. And thanks, thank you to Mark as well for the hard work that I know that he puts in and in helping you.
And he is on Zoom as well. So thank you. I appreciate the words.
Yes, thank you.
As the liaisons have been communicating over the last few weeks with lots and lots of questions. We thank you so much for all of those being answered for us. Just the one follow up that might be piggybacking on what's been asked. The pension costs are going up 10.5%. Does that become effective July 1 or is that a different point?
That goes into effect July 1st, yes.
Okay, and obviously you have that info in April. Just for future use. In what month do you receive what the amount will be?
We get that in January from CalPERS regardless to so that you can plan and budget for it for the next fiscal year.
Oh, that's really helpful to know. Okay, thank you. No other questions. I now like to open up the item for public comment. For the department budgets, does anybody here wish to speak at this point? Seeing none, is there anybody online?
Just giving a moment for folks to raise their hand. Okay, I do not have any requests for comment.
Thank you. Okay, we will begin to go through the different departments. Director Chung, may we please have the first department?
Yes, the first department will be city council presented by our city manager. And that will be page 43 through 46 of the agenda packet.
I'm sorry, what pages? I know this doesn't go in order.
We originally had PD going first because she had a meeting, but now we pushed PD back down. So council budget will be on page 43 through 46 of the budget packet. Now turn it over to city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. So on page 43 is the city council budget. And I'll be presenting all of the administration budgets to you, which includes city council, city attorney. Although the city attorney is sitting here and likely available for questions. Old Mill and then, of course, the city manager's actual budget. So beginning on page 43, you have the city council budget. You have all the of the information available there and you can see up on the slide, this is a status quo budget. There are no new proposed expenditures. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you might have about your budget.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Huang, any questions?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Udi, any questions?
No.
Councilmember Shepard Romy, any questions?
No.
Vice Mayor?
Nope.
And I have none. So with that, you have everything you need from us on that.
Yes, I do. Thank you very much.
If you could identify that strange building for us.
Yeah, it hasn't looked like that in a long time. We have long tables in that room and. I remember that room. All right. Thank you very much, council. Turning to the next department, it is the city attorney budget, which begins in your packet on page 47. And what we have done in this budget is we have broken out litigation and code enforcement services and given an approximation there. We are not quite done with the fiscal year just yet, but at this point in time, the city attorney has tentatively offered. To extend a cap on all other legal services, the general legal services at $240,000 for the next contract year. So that is worked into the budget as well. Again, we did split out litigation and split out COVID, those, sorry, code enforcement. Those are not caps. Those are just estimated expenses, which of course could go up or down depending on how much activity we have in either of those cost centers. With that, I am available for any questions or I imagine so a city attorney, Montes.
Thank you. Councilmember Udi?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Huang?
No question. Thank you.
Councilwoman Shepard Romy?
No, I just wanted to thank our new city attorney. We've been lucky to have you this year through some tough times already. And I think you and also the attorneys that you bring to our various meetings and issues have been very helpful. So thank you. It's been a pleasure to work with you.
Anything further?
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I agree wholeheartedly with Shepard Romy. Don't get the idea that you could charge us more than as a result of our. I do appreciate you and your firm, Joe. I have no questions.
Thank you. I have one quick question and that is code enforcement. We see an allocation of 50,000 there. How, since we don't have a figure, because it's moved for past years since it's moving over now. What are we spending at this point outside for code enforcement?
I'm gonna just turn it over to the city attorney.
Yeah, the estimate of 50 is based on what we're currently tracking. So it 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 could go up or down depending on the level of of activity. But currently, as we're ramping up, I think we're anticipating an increase, but also a little bit of a decrease. Offsetting decrease based on some of the new provisions that the council adopted that give more tools to code enforcement staff for enforcement purposes.
So I think that's where I was going next is ramping up because based on previous discussion. And a resolution we were looking at, we would like to be more robust in our follow up with code enforcement. And maybe this goes back to the city manager again. Do you feel that we are in a position? To have the staff at this point to further more code enforcement? Today, the answer is no. We have two and a half code enforcement officers budgeted plus a manager. Only one of those full time positions is filled at the moment. We are in the middle of recruitment for the full time, the other full time code enforcement officer. And then we may see if there's anyone in there who wants to be part time as well, or we'll launch that part time recruitment right after that. My hope is certainly that by the time this budget year starts, we will have everybody back in place. But at the moment, we are dealing with recruitment issues.
Okay, thank you. So with that. Sorry about this. I think that covers all of us weighing in. Is there anything further you need?
Not at all, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Our next department?
All right, our next department is the Old Mill and that begins on page 49 in your packet. The Old Mill budget has gone up just slightly and that is as a result of the MOU that you approved within the last few weeks. We did give them a bit of an increased amount so that that dollar number has gone up to $60,000 and that is that is the reason for it. That is the only expenditure in this cost center. So that concludes my presentation on this budget as well. I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thank you. I will ask generically to council, does anybody here wish to ask any questions? Seeing none, I think you've got everything you need from us on that.
I sure do. All right. Thank you very much. Next.
Department?
Last but not least, the city manager's office budget. So this has a little bit more meat on it. You can see from the slide above that there are some some cost changes going into this particular budget. They're basically being driven by four separate increases. One, as you know, of course, is the municipal election. That is the biggest cost driver of the city manager's budget. Because the city clerk's expenditures are located within this budget. So that's approximately $87,000 that we're expecting as a result of the municipal election in November. From there, there's also a proposal for an additional $10,000 in staff development to to improve some of the development of our executive team. All of the departments and department heads are very good about budgeting for conferences and memberships and those sorts of things in their individual department budgets. But there's no money set aside for soft skills development and executive training that we we might need. And as council knows, we have had several recruitments and several new positions. We have many first time directors aboard and they are awesome and certainly deserve to be invested in. And so there is a proposal here for $10,000 for that. There is also a proposal to increase the strategic plan cost line item by 17.5. That would be in the event that we end up with a new council in November. It will have been five years since we did our last strategic plan. That's a good time to update anyway. And if we have new council members, that would be an exceptionally good time. I hope that you all will agree that that was not just an excellent opportunity for us to do some strategic planning, but also a good team building activity for a new council to get to know each other. So that proposal is in there as well. It also is in there now as opposed to waiting because there'll be a relatively quick turnaround. If there is a new council seated in December, we're going to want to be able to move on this pretty quickly if that's something that appeals to the new council. And then last but not least, there is a $9,500 increase requested so that we can do a more proactive job. Of doing two annual mailers to residents per year with all sorts of pertinent educational information about how they can access the resources within the city. So those are the major cost drivers that are specific to our department in here and I am available for whatever questions you have.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang?
No, no question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Udi?
Yeah, it's just the numbers time on the slide. You have a total budget of 868. But when you add 629 and 383 together, you get a million 12.
So we had, and by we, I mean Finance Director Chung and I had many discussions back and forth about how into the weeds to get on these slides for you. These are the new increases. The other things that are driving cost impacts in my department, as well as everybody else's department that you'll see. Are some of the things that Director Chung mentioned earlier in the presentation. There's inflation that's built in here. There are separate from the this, the new $10,000 requested for executive team training. There's staff development costs in here. There's inflation in some of those memberships.
The question is, 629 plus 383 equals a million 12. But you're have a bold total expense budget of 868.
So council member, that's just an error on our side. That number, the total budget should be $1,000,000. 1,012,032 for city manager. For city manager. You are right. That number is, that eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand is not the right number.
Okay.
That's just an oversight on our side. I apologize.
Thank you.
And then also, you know, in this budget, but in other budgets, you know, I do see an investment in training and development for our people, which I think overall is a good positive thing that we should be doing.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shepard Romi?
I too had some questions about the additional expense. While I understand about some increase for the staff development, I just looked for myself that we've gone up, we're going up significantly. Obviously, the last year, I'm putting aside the 500 because of COVID. But for me, it's a very large jump from $1,600 to over $10,000. And I guess I don't understand, I understand staff development is important, but I don't know that's a very large jump in my mind of what might be a staff-building exercise or day or meetings. I don't know how you do it, not being in this business. So I wanted some justification for that because for me, that's quite a large jump. And I think that there are other cost centers, or I don't know, other line items where some of that activity is typically staff development, departmentally at least, you know, et cetera, is done in the various department budgets, which also are increasing, which I know is partly different, but also partly the same. And so I'm a little bit concerned about that one, and I had one other question before we move on.
But sure, let me address that. Thank you for having the opportunity to address that. One of the things that's unusual about our budget is that we have what I would call three cost centers that relate to employee development. There's membership and dues, which are literally membership and dues in whatever the professional associations are. We have an account called travel and meetings, and that's typically where we budget for actual conferences that we're going to. And then there's this overall staff development account number. In many cities I've been in, there is no third account. It's all kind of collapsed into one. So we've had lots of conversations about what's the difference between those two. And the staff development is really kind of a group development as opposed to I'm going to send you to an individual conference that you can go to. So it's an excellent question because this $10,000 is brand-new. We've never had money set aside to develop the executive team as a whole. What happened this year is, as a result of many other conferences not being held because of COVID, we were actually able to tap into that money a little bit. And the justification, just the way I got that number, is we did one session this year, and perhaps you will see the fruits of it. It was about public presentations. We did, and it was for the executive team, and that was forty-six, forty-four, less than 5,000, but it was about, it was either 4,400 or 4,600, just for that one kind of three-hour presentation. So if we wanted to do that, I know. So if we wanted to do that twice a year, that's $10,000 is where I got that number from. The executive team does have nine people on it, so if, you know, it helps. You could also divide the, you know, the percent, but that's where that number came from. That's why it's there. And the reason why it's up here on the slide as opposed to just embedded into Finance Director's Chung comment about investing in staff in general is because this is brand-new. We have never, as a city, made the decision consciously to invest in the executive team as executives as opposed to as a finance person and as a community development person and so forth.
All right. And then, so that, I guess that does tie into one other. So if you, I'm on page fifty-six for my council member, so also travel and meetings, right? So that's what you're talking about, and that is for you to go to conference, just let me ask my question, and then you could talk. The, that's the meetings and conferences that you or, and I assume, the assistant to city manager or community engagement and the city clerk would go to in any given year. And so again, that's a number that if I look back to, I'm ignoring COVID times. So we had a budgeted amount in 2019, 2020, and regardless of whether it was even spent, because I know part of that was COVID, is six, six and a half thousand dollars. And so now we're going to eleven and a half thousand dollars. So I have the same concerns there where it's a market increase, even if we are, prices have gone up, et cetera, et cetera. To me, doubling, whenever I look down in the weeds and I see things double or quadruple, a red flag goes off. And I know that part of that is cost acceleration, and I'm not even comparing. I'm comparing to 2019, 2020 budget in, because in my mind, I have to go back to pre-COVID times and then factor in a 10% or so increase for inflation, et cetera, and that's continuing to go up. So anyway, this is another one that stood out to me as a pretty significant jump. So I wanted some background on that. And then I do have a question about, or want to discuss with you briefly about the printing concept.
Fantastic. Okay. I'm happy to talk about the travel and meetings account because I think this question may come up for other departments as well, so maybe my answer will be helpful. The 2019-20 year, just to, just to clarify, is not completely pre-COVID. So COVID, as we all know, hit in March of 2020. There were already some anticipations. So a little over a quarter of that fiscal year was COVID-impacted, and there were expenses that didn't get, that didn't occur as a result of that last quarter. It's the closest thing we have here to a non-COVID year, but it isn't completely non-COVID. The other, so the other piece of this is that the columns that you see here for actuals don't represent the budget number. And I know you know that and can see that, but just to kind of explain what that means, the budget number that we adopted for 2019, 2020 was, I don't have it at my fingertips, Paul probably does, but was likely much higher than this. We just didn't actually spend it, in part because of whatever we might not have spent it for. We might have had staff vacancies. There might have been some COVID impacts to conferences and so forth. So what you're seeing in the first column and the second column are not the budget numbers that you adopted. It's what we actually spent. So if we spent less, that jump looks, you know, even bigger. What is actually happening, factually speaking, in my department is the additional money for travel and meetings is actually because we budgeted for an extra conference for Christina. So there's another city clerk function that, oh, I see Chief Donaville has left. There's another conference that would be valuable for her to be attending, especially with a municipal election coming. So we did look to budget for that specifically this year. So just that reminder that that 1920 year is not fully non-COVID and doesn't reflect the budget. It just reflects the actual.
All right. No, I appreciate that. And I don't know if it's possible, but, well, this is unusual circumstance. So hopefully, but it might hold true for the next couple of years because we're going to see really huge changes because our actuals, for example, for this, it's going to continue on. And I don't know how to reflect it better so we can look at budget and then actual budget and then actual, or something like that. It might make it a little smaller, but we all have readers on. So because it's very hard to do it, and I appreciate that. Some of it's due to COVID in part.
And it's a great point.
Anyway, so I don't know. Just think about that in the back of your mind, Paul, and with Mark. See, I don't know where to address that, but for me, it helps to kind of know what we were trying to do. And then you have to say circumstances are going to change. And whether it's COVID or, and staff changes, everything's going to be always the actual is not really reflective of what we intended to happen.
Totally.
So actuals are probably better guidance, at least for me, to see for the last couple of years, particularly till we get past, you know, 2020, 2021. Last question I have, sorry, has to do with the printing. And I know I see on the bottom of page fifty-four, we had talked about a biannual resident information handbook and mailer. And so the cost is fine. I appreciate we're reaching out and informing our community of changes. I just don't know whether, I know there's a significant expense already in the rec department because we send out quarterly very thick to all the households. And I'm just trying to think of what's the most cost-effective way to get communications out to people who move here, most importantly, who are new to our community, and then updates to existing community members, or should people come back and, you know? And I'm just not sure that a handbook that comes out like that is really the best way to do it. And I would think subject matter mailings or including subject matter sections in what we already send out, which is basically community services, but say, hey, these ordinances have changed. Look on the website, whatever. I just don't know how to do that. And I think this might be, instead of just printing something big that people get in their mailbox, and then they put in that catalog, magazine, unsolicited charity pile that you kind of look through on some random day. I would like to see it be a more active, smaller, more manageable thing that people might look at, a two-page or a four-page newsletter, and it comes as needed. So anyway, I just would want to work with, not that I think this cost should be eliminated, but just that we should think about the description that you attach to the cost of doing more brainstorming with you and staff and maybe community services to see how we could best reach our community members.
Sure. I think, I think we came up with this originally because the, the, how do I say it? The postage cost to take it down to a two-to-four pager is still kind of significant, and it becomes more fiscally efficient to do an eight-to-ten pager twice than to do a two-pager, you know, four times or something. But we did think that it was important to get information out there. We were thinking of it as kind of, you know, the reference guide that people would probably not read when they first got it, but maybe put up on their shelf, and when they had a question would know that they could refer to it. But this can completely be refined, and just, you know, for full transparency, this was one of the proposals as a priority initiative.
Right.
There were very few things that actually got a majority of your interest and several things that got two of your interest. And this was one of those that got two of your interest, but we kind of thought it was a good idea internally. So we wanted to put it in front of you again to have an opportunity to perhaps do it. But it's not set in stone, the format that it would go out. We're just trying to maximize the money.
And I was just, would point out if you, well, anyway, we and I have just discussed the minutia, but for community mailings, you know, pre-sorted, you would obviously do 91108 area code. And so it can be a significant cost savings in mailing costs if you're doing something to every registered property owner, which I think this would be, at least, you know, in concept, could save you a lot from normal mailing. But anyway, good for that.
Good tip. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And those are my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Can I just jump in really quick regards to the travel and training being that, I found the budget. It was $10,000. So in 1920, the city manager's travel and training was $10,000, and also for 2021 was $10,000. So that she's asking for an increase to $11,555. Just wanted to show that comparison. And the reason I bring it up is because you also see that in our, in our department budgets as well for travel and training, that our budget is not reflected because only actuals are reflected in it.
Right. No, I appreciate that. And that makes me more comfortable than, that we're doing this and continuing that forward. I do think it's important for staff and the executive team to have those executive performance-type meetings, and that would be helpful for staff and is important for everybody here. Thank you.
And I'll make sure in the future, I think, a comparison, because this comes up, I think, at least the last couple of budget sessions as well, regards to what was the budget? What was the actuals for historic? So I'll provide that schedule moving forward as well to give additional context for council.
Thank you very much, Paul. Or Director Chung? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Um, what did you spend the discretionary funds on?
The construction of our mother's room upstairs in City Hall.
The construction of our what?
We politely call it mother's room. Some people refer to it as a lactation room.
Okay. And, but you didn't spend any money out of your discretionary fund on staff retention or anything like that?
I did not. This fund has been an interesting inclusion into the budget. We called it a contingency fund, and the reason why it arrived in the budget was in several years ago, in that particular budget year, which I believe was 1819, there were some costs that had come up during the course of the year that I had to come to council for to get money appropriated, and that delayed what the project was. And I apologize. I don't remember what those things were. And so there was a discussion during the budget process that year that it would be helpful to have an amount of money set aside for the city manager in the case that one of those kind of urgent emergency issues come up, where it would be easier to be able to execute immediately instead of waiting for a council agenda. At the time, you set it at 30,000, which is my procurement authority. That next year, there thankfully were no urgent emergencies that popped up. And so since no money was expended, you lowered it to 20,000. So I don't, I don't think of it as a discretionary account to spend whatever I think might be nice. I try to think of it in terms of really critical, important needs that we have that could be done in a more efficient way if I, if I were able to use that money. And that's just based on my understanding from you all of how I should be using that money. So I try not to touch it.
And I agree we should spend money on staff development. I think it's, it makes for a healthy staff. Problem is, we've done a horrible job retaining our directors and managers. Horrible job. And I want to make clear that money should be spent in the best way to retain people that we've invested in the past. So it's not necessarily the amount of money. It's what you do with that money that's important. Because quite frankly, I'm tired of picking up the, or looking in my emails and seeing that someone else has left. It's, it costs the city money, and it costs the, it, money that's not necessarily reflected in any budget. And, and I don't know why we're having that trouble, and I don't get an answer today, but I'm, I, since, I wanted the council to take a serious look at the issues we are having and putting aside the police situation as to why, in the last couple of years, we've had a complete turnover in our, in our non-public safety managers and directors. And it is just, it's disheartening to the city. It's difficult for us. I have enough trouble remembering names without having them changed every, you know, three months. So if we're going to spend this money, I want the, the city manager's office to take a serious look at what's important to our existing directors and managers or directors and executive team members to find out what they want in order for their, in order for them, in training-wise, to feel like Seattle is a place they want to stay.
Great.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Just a definition, if you will. On page fifty-five for advertising, we have a $40,000 proposal on that. What would that include?
This is a terrible description for this account number. This is actually the city clerk's account number. This is where we publish ordinances and public hearing notices.
Actually, that sounds a little low. I know that gets to be quite pricey.
It certainly can. Yes.
So, okay.
Maybe I'll talk to the finance director about changing that word.
Okay. And as far as the 9,500, I think that is the item that I am most excited about. We owe every resident something that is really simple to comprehend, going through ordinances of the last five years or ordinances they should be aware of so that it be, could be attractive enough that I could look at it and not want to throw it down. And what I have learned at a recent city club meeting, not a lot of our residents go online. We'd love for them to do so. So in that mailer, you know, a "how do I" page would be helpful. And if we could even consider a tear-off with a mail in, "how often would you like to receive these?" I'm just hearing from too many residents that they're unaware about A, B, or C. We've got to explore multiple ways to get to them. We know we do have an older population. Some are very adept with social media, and some tell me they really count on their mail, and everybody counts. So I'm excited about that, and
Thank you. Great suggestions.
Thank you. That is it. Is there anything further you need on this item?
I am set. Thank you so much.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, there was one other category that I had a question about, and I apologize. On the, toward the bottom of page fifty-five, it's the first under service and supplies, other contract services. A last year, well, this year, we're estimated to spend $100,000. Granted, it's COVID time, and this is where you are adding in the potential for a strategic plan update. But I'm just wondering what also, or why, what is normally included in that 139, a last year's budget? Because it again has jumped tremendously from 19 and 20. And so I wanted to know what all is, what is included in that that would
Sure.
account for such a difference, even from the 17 is, I'm assuming, from last year's budget to this is the strategic plan difference. But if I can understand, because that's again a significant sum, that's just kind of a blanket statement, and I don't know what all is included there.
Yes, councilmember, that is our squishy account that houses all of our contract services, which is why you all, you're so go. Maybe a very smart decision to pull out IT so that at least we could see that separately. Because this is one of those accounts that houses so many different things exactly as you've described. Last year, you actually asked to see the tie-out sheets for this, and so Finance Director Chung has included them for you again. There's so much information here, it's so easy to get lost. So if you turn to page one thirty nine, you'll see what was in there before. As you're turning to that page, I would also um, just remind you that what you see in previous years is again. The actual expenditures, not the budget amount. And one of the things that was budgeted in here a year or two ago was the Chinese translation engagement program. And we have still not managed to expend that fully for two reasons. We had a vacancy uh, in that area, so we couldn't spend as much money as we wanted to. And some of that money is actually being paid for by COVID right now, because we're doing a lot of translations that are related to COVID information. And so instead of them hitting this account where they normally would, they're hitting a different account. But um, we have big plans for that money next year, so we'll definitely be expending that. So this is, this is generally what we're spending from there.
I'm sorry, can you, all right, and and I appreciate that. I see it now and understand the largest part in my mind is the, of course, the translation services.
Yes.
And any expenses there over the past year, or a large part of them, I would think would be COVID or. And this as well could be something that is the ARPA um, expenses. Um, in part, a- as needed, if it does relate to COVID or anything um, that we are doing to update and keep the community informed.
That's why this item hasn't gone down as much as you might have expected, because we're spending it out of COVID instead of spending it out of here.
All right. So thank you. It would, um, yeah, I wish we had better, some parenthetical there. For the community who might even be not really focusing on this, but just the numbers, it's a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, do you have everything you need on this side?
I believe I do.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Where do we go next?
Next will be my department finance, uh, and non-departmental, so let me get to that slide really quick. That is on page of your agenda, pages fifty seven through sixty eight. For my department finance department, uh, overall, FT, we're not increasing or asking any additional bodies. The budget for personnel side is increasing slightly by sixteen thousand, and that's really just um, the purse and the step increases that's embedded in there. On the services and supplies, we're going up by six point five percent or uh, twenty three thousand. And just wanted to highlight to the council, the reason for that increase in service and supplies. I'm asking for uh, seven thousand dollars uh, for the property tax analysis and audit services. This is um, I believe this is uh, this is needed, being that, as you know, property tax is our main driver here. And I, Mark and I, we do our best to forecast out property tax, but uh, there's firm, there's a firm that. Is an expert on property tax analysis, uh, but what they provide is the audit services, which we do not have the capability to do. And what they do is they look at the assessor, uh, LA County's Assessor's Office and make sure what they're recording um, is properly reflected with the market values. And that is valuable, being that if they find any um, issues regards to the assessor not correctly reflecting the market value. They'll go ahead and adjust that, and we'll see that in our, of course, our re- property tax revenues. And we haven't done that analysis or audit for a very long time. So I believe that is a big component that I really would want for us to do next year. To just to make sure that we know that what the LA Assessor's Office is, is recording is correct. Um, another ask is five thousand dollars for the GAZF seventy five. What that basically means is, is for our actuarial study. We do this every two years and it is mandatory uh, report that needs to be analyzed, so that five thousand dollar ask is in there. And also uh, utilities, as I mentioned earlier, from Vice Mayor, questions on um, what is increasing? Yes, uh, the utilities uh, are going up. Electricity specifically is, rate is up at ten point five percent, so uh, that's about a five percent, uh, five thousand dollar increase that I included in the budget. Other than that, there's some miscellaneous small increases here and there in the overall budget, but um, these are the big ticket items. I'm open for any questions from the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Huang, questions?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Yudi?
No questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Chappie Romy?
My question is um, only about the, I know that some departments, well, you obviously do have this. Graphics, and are these going to be included in these um, in the final budget, or is this for us at this meeting?
No, this will be included with the final budget.
Okay, and as well as for the other departments, for example, police had some, but then fire didn't. And I know fire generates uh, so many, and unfortunately it's not here right now, um, but typically, they, they um, actually have a lot of metrics. That we could see, and so I was, I didn't see any consistency across the board in the departments. I mean, it might not always be, every department has metrics, but there were quite a bit of them. So I'm just, I wanted to ask you stylistically, if we are going to publish all these. Can we make sure that we have the departments that do have existing metrics in other reports, for example, you know, like the fire, the monthly? That all of those might come in here, because I do think that's um, nice and appreciated. Because a lot of people like to see their um, graphics like this at a glance over the course of the past year. That's very helpful.
Great, I'll make sure uh, at the package, the alt, the budget packet overall, that I'll be presenting May twenty seventh. Will have all the various metrics for the each of the departments and or organizational charts as well, yes.
Great, okay, thank you. I just didn't know, I noticed in here that you talked about organization, but then I noticed that there was some. So this is not at all um, a reflection on you, just what was, I wanted to understand what would be appearing and if there was the consistency. And I, I again, I greatly appreciate your and Mark's time, um, and everybody who's helped you and your department. Because this is a a mammoth work and it very well done. Thank you.
Councilmember Yudi? Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor?
Um, the the City Hall credit card fees on page sixty seven, do we recover those?
When you say do we recover that?
There's a fee charge.
Yes.
I- and what's, it, because I don't see any. Well, you you don't have it as a part of your revenue, so I was wondering. So that revenue shows up someplace else. The credit card recovery?
Let me, for any credit card fees that we charge, um, during the fee study, we embed those costs as an indirect cost. To uh, running the business for the city, basically. So we cover, we cover those revenues and it's included in our fees that we charge.
Oh, okay, so it's, it's shown, the recovery.
Yeah, there's no separate line item called you credit card recovery. It's just part of the rev, various revenue items, it's included in part of our fees that we charge.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Um, I have a quick question about Prop A money. Cities are required to have dial-a-ride, correct?
Oh, are are they required? I'm not sure if they're required. We do, you get funding for Prop A to implement dial-a-ride programs. But I don't think it's mandatory to.
I'm curious, um, I see estimated use of eighty six hundred. So that would suggest that people in town are using it somewhat, right?
Oh, here, yes, we do program for that, yes.
I I, not the programming, but the actual use. Um, do we know? This might be something encouraging to market if residents are indeed using it and we can expand. For any reason where someone is uh, unable to drive, um, you don't have any numbers on that. For for future reference, if you could just get that info, that might be helpful and see if it's something that we want to spend more promotion on.
It could go in our, in our bi- uh, bi-annual.
Our resident.
Exactly, exactly, and there's some of us who could use it everywhere, right? And then I had another question, sorry for losing my cadence here. Shucks. Oh, um, we've been asked um, by a resident, um, the citywide um, IT services contract. Can you give a status report on that, please, in just a few sentences?
Yes, so back in October, I went out for an RFP process for our IT co- uh, contract services. Uh, unfortunately, that fell through, being that the firm that we selected, they were merged by a, or purchased by a bigger, bigger company. A lot bigger company, a nationwide company. So we decided to just extend the contract, because our contract had stipulation there that we could extend it for two years. So I only extended it for one year. Um, this year, that cost um, is increasing by CPI per agreement by five percent. But that, so next, I believe our contract now is till January of next year. So I'll begin that RFP process probably in December to to go out for bid to see if we could get a better pricing or a better firm or stick with the current firm.
Exactly what was needed. Thank you so much. Uh, is there anything else that you need from us on finance?
No, thank you.
May I ask one question, Mayor? Um, and you reminded me, the, uh, on page sixty six, the bus transportation dash chamber. Is that referring to a Chamber of Commerce event and the um, a Christmas, I'm sorry, holiday Santa trolley, if you will?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I thought it might be, but I just wanted to know, because we haven't had it in the last couple of years.
And on that, no, have we had any communication from the chamber about joint events this year like that?
Not at this point. We're in discussions with them about that particular event ongoing. We started those a couple of months ago, our Director Johnson did. But we haven't had any specific communication recently. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, why don't we take uh, ten minutes, but make it ten? Well. All right, why don't we continue? We have finished finance and pray tell, what do we have next?
Yes. Yes, non-departmental. This this is department that oversee this as regards to uh, what a budget for all departments, any services that uh, we provide for internally for all departments. And so the budget for next year is two million dollars. The this this apartment is broken up into three categories. The personnel is three hundred thousand, and that is actually going up from two hundred thousand dollars current budget to a hu- three hundred thousand. And that's the hundred thousand dollar OPEP annual contribution that the council approved a couple of months ago, the investment that the council is making into lowering that OPEP liability. Um, so I included that budget here. And then on the services and supplies is one point one million dollars. It's actually a decrease from this current fiscal year. About eighty six thousand dollar decrease for next year. And then debt service at five hundred fifty two thousand dollars. The uh, on the services and supplies, uh, the reason for the decrease really uh, contributes to the COVID expenditures, being that a lot of the COVID expenditures are not going to roll into next year. And also uh, the equipment cost allocation, um, which we call equipment depreciation. Any equipment we purchase over five thousand dollars, we track that, the life of that equipment, and we depreciate that. It's not really a actual cash um, impact to the city. It's more of an accounting um, budget item. So that's an increase being that a lot of our equipment is depreciating this year. So that number is lowered next year, and that's why it's reflected in our services supplies. Um, overall, the last item is debt service is slightly going up, but that's just per contract, that that agreement contract. So we see a slight increase of twenty thousand next year. Um, that overall, that's the only increases that I did include the IT increase of that CPI that that I mentioned earlier, the five percent increase. Um, and that's for the non-departmental's budget. I'll turn it over to the council for any questions.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Trevor Rome, any questions?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Yudi?
No questions.
Councilmember Juan?
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor Tom?
No.
And I have none. So you have everything you need from us?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next department is human resources. That is on your agenda pages.
Are you gonna be staying up there the rest of the day?
Yeah, I'm hoping not, but uh, the HR's department uh, items, page numbers sixty nine through seventy six. I get the privilege of continuing to oversee HR. And uh, the budget for next year is one point five million dollars. On the personnel side, we do see an increase of twenty two percent on on the personnel side. And that, the reason for that is, of course, we upgraded this the HR manager's position to a director's position back in December. And so that's reflected in next year's budget. Uh, we are um, looking for and um, recruiting for that position. And hopefully we'll be able to come back to council with a uh, a recommended position, uh, person uh, filling that spot. On the services and supplies, a slight increase of thirty one thousand. And the reason for that is highlighted here. Um, the main driver is the ten thousand dollar increase in legal services labor for for overseeing the city on the labor side. Uh, also, we are asking for an increase of eleven point five thousand dollars in recruitment. And the reason for this I uh, recruitment increase is really, we're we're trying to correct the budget. We, as you're aware, there has been turnover and we've been uh, trying to fill these spots. And I think for city manager also, uh, i- it's not only Sam Marino itself. There has been a mass exodus of employees, um, various agencies or even private businesses. Retaining employees has been challenging and also recruiting um, uh, staff. So uh, basically this eleven thousand is asking for additional um, budget for next year for that recruitment process. The liability insurance is actually going down next year. These are numbers provided by CJPI of thirty thousand. And um, I did add one more bullet, which it's now reflected up here. Hopefully it's in your PowerPoint uh, printed slide. But we are increasing uh, workers' comp premium by thirty five thousand, and that was proof, that was provided by our workers' comp um, company as well. Uh, that's for human resources. I'll turn it over to uh, the council for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yudi, any questions?
Yeah, a couple uh, concerns, and we've talked about it before, but one is uh, workman's comp. It's up like ninety four thousand dollars over the last couple of years, and uh, the number of claims are projected to increase. So I, you know, I think that's an area where you you gotta really manage that down. I know the the expenses, the expense this next year, but you know, that that's one where you really gotta be on top of it and manage that that down. And then the other big concern to me is the performance appraisal completion rate hovering at fifty percent. You know, and again, that's not a budget item, but that, you know, to me leads to, you know, morale and feedback to people and personal growth and development and turnover. So I think that really needs to be focused on.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Trevor Rome, any questions?
Yes, I also had a similar question about workers' comp, but in a different vein. Does any of that have to do with COVID-related illnesses or is that all injuries? If you will, physical injury attributed to accidents or or problems sustained during their work on the job?
Yes, it's it's all of it under uh, the umbrella of workers' comp. Any injury at work, whether it be COVID or um, non-COVID-related injury, uh, is encompassing in that.
Right, so, but I'm asking so again, for purposes of using funds that are meant to um, assist municipalities or or government institutions, you know, such as ARPA or even our own um, COVID-related funds. Are any of these, um, do we break out, not by name of the person, but or people, but by totals of which of it is COVID, so then we can use government funds from external sources to partially pay some of these? Because it is increasing and it still may for years to come, or at least months, definitely next year. Because I believe that there are people who may be going out or or maybe out there due to COVID-related uh, issues.
That's, it's a, it's a great point. Um, regards to, we don't break it out with if it's COVID or not. We do, of course, have uh, our admin sure does provide, that's our agency that we use regards to what that workers' comp incident revolved around, whether it be COVID or non-COVID related. They do track that, but beyond that, um, we lump it all into this one line item because the premium is paid based on their analysis regards to next year.
It's an interesting question. I don't know if we can spend ARPA money on workers' comp. If it's COVID-related, we can certainly look into that. Okay, interesting question.
I I just think because there are funds still that we haven't spent within our city otherwise, but this seems to be similarly related. And um, maybe perhaps, because I do see as uh, councilmember Yudi, it's, you know, the continuation up, which will go up statistically to some degree, but this may be going up at a faster rate, um, this expense because of COVID. So I think it would be attributable to that. That's all. Thank you. If you could explore that.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, councilmember Juan?
Uh, well, I'm not complaining, but I just have a question about insurance premium, JPI. I mean, why, why the actual was a, you know, for twenty nineteen is a higher right now. It's uh, less, just curious.
It it varies. Um, it depends on the year.
Really, usually they go up, you know.
It's based on our claim experience.
So is it because we, our claims went up and that's why the previous year was?
Previous years, because it 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 varies depending upon the year. But yes, previous years was higher because we just had more instances versus what their per, uh, what their insurance is for next year. The cost is their analysis and they provide that number to us.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Tom?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, the only thing that I will comment on, and I'm sorry for beating a dead horse, so I will make it quick, is the recruitment. It looks like um, four years worth is getting close to maybe a hundred and eighty thousand plus training and onboarding the people. So um, if we can develop some internal tools to try to um, get a better handle on that. Um, any, uh, anything else you need from us?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next?
Next permit will be community development. And that will be pages uh, on your packet seventy seven through eighty six.
Welcome Director Figaro. And Director Chang is getting a much-needed break.
Since we haven't said your name too many times, we promise to be gentle.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Hopefully you can remember. No, you did, you did. Good morning. Uh, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the team members of the City Council for allowing me the opportunity to present the Community Development Department's budget, which is proposed at three and a half million dollars. Personnel budget is increasing by approximately twenty eight thousand or two point two percent primarily due to the conversion of the existing part-time senior planner position to full-time, which would increase the department's full-time employees from the existing ten and a half to eleven. The fiscal impact to convert the position from the part-time to full-time is approximately seventy thousand dollars. The reason the personnel budget is only increasing two point two percent or approximately twenty eight thousand dollars is because, as you all know, the department has experienced a high staff turnover. And the newly hired staff is being hired at the introductory salary range, providing the department with the savings costs. The request to convert the part-time senior planner to full-time is necessitated to provide technical direction and supervise junior staff, manage the housing projects backlog, which require planning commission and DRC review. Commensurate with that, oversee the state mandated housing programs such as ADU and the SB nine ordinances. Assist the housing element certification process, as you all know, that is uh, required to be certified by the state by October fifteenth of this year. Manage the tree permanent review process. Along with that, um, one of the things that I foresee is an influx of appeals based on uh, staff's decision. So that would then necessitate going to the planning commission. Oversee the economic development strategy, assist in the general plan update, and manage highly technical and complicated projects. Services and supplies proposes an increase of approximately sixty five thousand dollars or five point eight percent, primarily due to a ninety thousand in, ninety thousand dollar increase for additional plan check services. An increase of fifty thousand for the housing element consulting contract. A decrease of fifty thousand dollars based on the transfer prosecution services for our city attorney. A decrease of twenty seven thousand based on the transfer software costs to finance department. Uh, one of the things I want to highlight, as you know, um, staff has encountered some difficult situations with some projects that were managed by previous staff. I think the director position in the city has evolved for the past few years because of the level of development. And prior years, I think the director was more hands-on, was able to provide that level of of review and direction to junior staff. However, because of state mandated uh, housing bills, the um, obligations that come with an executive team member. I think there's been a gap of that supervision, so staff has been able, has been given some uh, room to make some interpretations. And I think what's missing is that mid-level uh, person, that staff member that can be the conduit between the director and providing uh, technical expertise and mentorship to the junior staff. So that's, I think, a main reason why we're we're providing, we're requesting this full-time senior planner. Another thing I would like to highlight, we're we're just one staff member leaving for whatever reason on having a really taxing uh, impact on existing staff. And one of the things I would like to highlight is, and this is just by coincidence, uh, our two, our two uh, planners were recently called up for jury duty. So one, we were fortunate enough that they were only gone for a short time, but the other was gone for two weeks. That had an extensive uh, taxing uh, on our resources. So another thing I would like to highlight is our billing department only has one billing inspector. So one of the um, services that our plan checking service contract has is they provide a building permit uh, support. So our existing uh, permanent inspector, any minute now, he's gonna be on leave because his wife is about to have a baby. So we're pro- being proactive, we're coordinating with uh, our uh, our plan checking services consultant for support. And just by coincidence, since this Monday, we've received eighty-five inspection requests. So again, we're just one staff member away from really having a taxing uh, impact on our staff. And so um, staff is available for any questions. And again, um, I I really feel that we really need this full-time senior planner in order for us to provide the level of service that is expected of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's start with questions. Councilmember Juan?
So this is an existing um, senior pl- part-time uh, senior planner?
Correct. They dedicate about twenty to twenty-five hours a week. The problem with that is, again, uh, one, one of the difficult parts about this position, when I say this position, I mean planning, we get a a a number of emails, calls, and and some of these require extensive research. So when you have someone who's part-time, not only are they handling the existing workload, but they're also receiving email inquiries from um, residents, land developers, you name it. And so for someone who's part-time, their attention to concentrate on an active docket, project docket, is difficult because then they also have the responsibility of responding to emails and phone calls.
And then so for full-time, will they be um, working on Fridays till five?
Full-time would be seven to uh, five, and Friday is seven to eleven. And for the senior planner, uh, that might mean more additional time because of the planning commission, DRC, and other high-level technical projects.
And how long has this uh, boss, senior planner been with our city?
The the position, I believe, was created last fiscal year?
No, the position was created um, several years ago by us. Uh, we made the decision at the time to create a part-time senior planner position downstairs. You may recall, we knew that Amanda Merlo was interested in working on a part-time basis, and she was an excellent fit for that position. So it's been with us as a part-time position for, I believe, three years. Uh, Amanda was the first person to fill up, and I believe we're on our third part-time senior planner right now.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Councilwoman Trevor Rome?
Um, yes, thank you so much. I think this is a critical, obviously for a number of reasons, department um, for our city. It do do so much with the, in the umbrella of um, community development, which is actually everything right down to the trees, which um, piqued my interest, of course. Because with our departure recently, very sadly, of our urban forester, I don't know if you need additional help in that regard, that I don't see here, of a part-time or how you're gonna handle those responsibilities. Because I know, I don't know, and I was looking between the two departments, I don't know where his position was technically. I don't know, accounted for, let's say, in personnel, but um, uh, that's one concern of mine that I wanted to ask you about specifically, and then I had some other comments about, so.
Um, if you're offering me help, I'll take anything I can get. But I I know Director uh, Chang might not like that, but I I'll take whatever I can get. Uh, in terms of the urban forester, that position, I believe, will be uh, advertised pretty soon. That's in the Polyworks uh, department, but there's a lot of coordination with us. I know the Polyworks is working on a uh, on a uh, on retaining the uh, service of the consultant to fill that gap. But uh, yeah, I believe the urban forester position will be advertised pretty soon.
Okay, and well, okay, so that gets to my point. Because I know that other council members and community members have talked about having access to an ARPA consultant, either to help them through the permit process, would they be removing and adding a tree or trees on any given project? And so um, it, I don't see anything here that adds to your a a department, whether it's a contract service for an outside to help you with a, or not you personally, but to help community members with that process. Because we already had a problem with the urban forester wearing uh, two hats, right? In charge of all the city trees and city resource, which is that, as well as then going out on individual private property removals. And that seemed to me part of the overwhelming amount of responsibilities that our prior urban forester had. That was a change when we created that position, because it was under, uh, at least a private tree removals, was under your department, um, under a prior director. And seemed to work with actually having a person, a full-time staff member, I believe, i- in your department that just dealt with those issues, um, along with helping uh, probably in other ways that I don't know. But um, my concern is we are increasingly um, facing, and I think tree removals still are a problem area in the city, um, both in terms of helping community members understand and also comply. And then I'll make sure that the evaluations, the appeal, et cetera, that whole process goes smoothly. Should, should anybody not agree with decisions that were made? And this doesn't take into account this proposal, and I completely agree as a senior, your presentation and the reasons for um, the senior planner, just dealing with planning decisions makes sense. But I'd like to know from you, are there, is there another position or part-time position or contract way to help your department deal with those costs that you're running into specifically related to that tree issue?
So so we did not account for um, a position that will look specifically at trees since the urban forester position uh, exists and will be advertised soon. Polyworks also will have a contract with a consultant, so we were relying on those two. We could definitely take a look and see what within community development we can um, appropriate in order to have that help, um, that obviously we do need.
I I I get that request a lot from um, community members, and I don't know who to direct it. And I know your staff not only has been decimated by departures, um, but other pressing jury duties and and uh, now paternity leave, and that's, some of that is wonderful. However, you don't need more work in your department, and so then the community members don't have a resource. And it's not just a temporary situation for when we get the urban forester filled again. That's a long time, long-term um, request uh, of many people in the community that we really need to offer more assistance in this regard. So I would hope, and hopefully then, again, it would alleviate some of your code enforcement calls, et cetera. I mean, the whole spectrum would benefit by having um, either a consultant or a position um, put uh, made available.
Well, we'll take a look.
Thank you. And the other that I wanted to ask you is, I know that having a, I believe that your part-time person is now gone or soon departed.
No, we we had a part-time uh, management analyst that uh, left the city, but our, our part-time senior planner is here.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Um, so I'm even wondering whether you need more help in your lower, you know, to bring somebody on because at the lower level planners, because we do see, and I was looking, a tremendous up- because at the lower level planners, because we do see, and I was looking, a tremendous uptick in the ADUs, as well as it's going to get very complicated in the next year if we have an increase in lot divisions and building permits for some of the potential fallout from Senate bills nine and ten. And so I wanted to see if that is something that you see can be handled by your department or realistically, do we need to hire another, or think about hiring another person? Or what the best way is to do, to get us through the next two years? Because we can hire some consultants, like in here, I do see that we're hiring, we have an increase on the top of page eighty-three for another consultant for the effort, efforts regarding housing element. You've anticipated that, but I just really mean, it comes down to additional staff time too, because every zoning change or whatever we might have, there's obviously going to be interest and it will take time of your staff to help the community understand what they can and cannot do over the next couple of years as we work through that. So I'm wondering if you have enough people, clearly, not, not right now, but if you can think and anticipate if another staff position to some degree would be helpful to then free up time for more experienced staff members that you may hire in to deal with the more difficult issues coming ahead.
This is a, oh, thank you for the question, and like I said, I'll take any help I can get. But there's a balancing act here. One, even if I were to get everything that I can, I wouldn't have the space for them. We really are compacted in terms of space. Additionally, I've been here two and a half months. I think the need for the senior planner is evident. We are going to fill the assistant planner position. I do feel there will be more work that will necessitate more help. I think we can safely say that if we can secure contract services to help and make an assessment of how we can move forward, that would help out. I don't know that we, even if, if we can get additional bodies, I, I just don't know where we can put them right now.
Okay. Councilmember, if I could also add, I think you're absolutely right that of all of the departments, community development is the one that needs more staffing. Director Figueroa, I had a lot of conversation about this. I try to be very conservative when it comes to proposing new staff to you all, of course, full-time staff, especially since there's a pension involved. We saw this as the first step of triage. The department is hemorrhaging right now, and really the place where they need the most help immediately is senior planner. One of the things that we've been talking about is a longer-term plan for you to potentially consider next year of what fuller staffing might really look like. The other challenge we're having, as Director Chung indicated, is just because we have a budgeted position available doesn't mean we can find someone to fill it. I think as of like a couple of weeks ago, and actually, City Attorney can probably chime in on this. I believe Alhambra was down to like one person in their planning department. So this is very difficult, how to find people. So, and as Director Figueroa mentioned, we have a space issue. As you know, the community development department is compressed into that side area on the first floor of City Hall, and there really is nowhere else to put people. So part of the conversation that we were going to have on a longer-term basis is, what would the plan be for that? So I would also agree with him, if you'd like to give more staff, I promise you, we'll find a place to sit them, even if it's at the library or, you know, outside, or, you know, we'll find it. But so certainly don't want to tell you that we don't need more staff because of all the departments. This is really where we do have the need. We thought that on the forest issue, we would wait for the urban forester to start and then have a three-way discussion about what additional resources we need and then come to you for that. And in terms of staffing in general, we anticipated that that would probably be next year. So you're, of course, either welcome to wait or give us more staff now, and we can, we can try to figure that out. But you're, you're right, we just thought it would be a little bit of a longer process to get it in front of you.
Right, and I understand though, my, my thought just to conclude is that, and so I ask you to reconsider this because if we don't put it in the budget now, as you know, you can't hire, not you can't, but it becomes a much bigger deal to hire and do that. And I'm very concerned what next year, particularly because of the housing element, will really mean for staff time, even with hiring an outside consultant, it will be yet again, a different one, a new person who's going to start. That takes a huge amount of your time, of even a senior planner's time to interface, and then to do all the work that's necessary to translate it for our community. And so we are looking for that as a two-year process, assuming our housing element even gets accepted in the right way, that will take us two years of effort to really comply with some of the things that we need to do and ordinances zoning. So I'm just concerned that that's always, that's being pushed out to the outside, but that's really not it. And we found, because we had two consultants, which were fine, but again, there were problems because they really don't know our community or what we wanted. In the end, that was sort of a problematic. So we do need a person to oversee that, and all that can't fall on you or even a full-time senior planner, which sounds like they'll have a full docket already of things. And we haven't even talked about economic development and building permits falling off and that type of thing. So I'm really concerned that we don't have enough man, sorry, person power and brain power, most importantly, of experienced people who can help us. And I understand there's a shortage, but I would like you to come forward with something else there that we could grab on to, even if it's a part-time, but making it experienced professional that just does with something that would help us in this regard, would be my request to think about that again. Thank you.
Well, then let's say this, if there's consensus around us bringing forward a proposal, you don't have to have consensus on supporting the proposal. But if there's consensus on us bringing it forward, then in the next few weeks, we can put something into the budget for you to consider when you see it again at the end of May.
And, and just a final, somebody may be, I know part-time isn't always what people want, but also it may be appealing to somebody who is used to a, a different work-life situation during COVID and maybe a spot that would be a part-time position would be helpful for us and we could gain an experienced person who doesn't want to return full-time. So that would be my suggestion, and I don't know at what level it would be if council wants to, or I don't know how we take a straw poll or how you want to do that, Mayor. Thank you.
Why don't we get a little more thoughts and then we'll do the consensus. Thank you. Anything else?
No, thank you very much. Thank you, Director Figueroa.
Oh, thank you.
Councilmember Yudi?
Yeah, I would support your proposal to take the part-time, full-time. Thank you. And then, then a question on page seventy-eight, the building permits issued, the projection this year is about seven hundred and fifty and is going up to about nine hundred and forty. Is this year low or is next year high? And I guess trying to compare it to what happened in twenty nineteen, twenty.
I, I don't have enough experience here to, to respond to that.
And I was also reflecting on that, listening to Gretchen's comments, because if your workload today is seven fifty, and if you're projecting workload next year at nine forty, that's a thirty percent increase in permits and workload in that area.
I believe the nine forty was for this year. Was it not?
Yeah, that's estimated for this year.
Oh, okay, okay. Right, thank you. No, that is a huge, that is a huge increase then to go from seven fifty to nine forty.
My actual.
I too agree that, and it's so, it's been somewhat anticipated given the, the increase in the state's desire to make everything look like San Francisco. And, and so it is, I, I, I am in agreement with the increase from part-time to full-time with respect to an increase of even more. I'm open to listen to it, but I'm hesitant to in, in, only because as you said earlier, your, your feet are still pretty wet here. And I, I'd want to wait and, and get a, a true estimate by you after you get a greater understanding. But I'm willing to listen to a halftime at this point, just to, to fill some, part-time, just to fill some gaps. But I, I really want to hear more as you get more experienced in dealing with both the needs of our public and your experience at the position.
That, that's an excellent point, and one of the things I would like to touch briefly, you heard Director Chung talk about a lot of things decreasing because of COVID. The one thing that I think has been consistent, in, in my opinion, based on my interaction with my colleagues, development has increased during COVID. And I don't see that slowing down. I think a lot of the development that you'll see here are home rebuilds, teardowns, rebuild, or significant modifications to existing homes, because now people are working from home, they're reimagining their working space.
Exactly.
I don't want to get too much into theory, but that is going to be the, the crux here.
And, and they've had more time to look around, conserve homes.
Right, exactly.
I gotta do that, you know?
And they can't afford to move some ones that are on the market now.
We might as well spend it inside.
And I think with ADUs, the facilitation of permitting these, I think you're going to see a lot of keeping up with the Joneses. People are going to start building them, not so much for the need, but more for it's part of the fabric now of the community. So I think we're, we're going to see a lot of development.
I'm going to echo a lot of what has been sent, but from a slightly different angle. I had been thinking about this for a few days. I have deep concern, but first you've got to promise you won't leave us about the capacity for your position in that, as already has been referenced, the state influence on local communities, both through legislation and through those reviewing required documents, is only going to become more intense. Our local control is gone, and I am worried, as we all know, with ADUs. That is required approval, I believe it's sixty days, correct? And along with our housing element and Rena, we will most likely see more ADUs being submitted, along with the other issues you're presenting. Add on to that, the preparation for DRC and PC. I think there's some process improvement needed there. I think there is past due training, extensive training for both bodies. And if I'm reading it correctly, you may need to correct me on this. I think you are removing, is due to the residential and commercial design guidelines not being rebudgeted. Does that mean we're not going to have new guidelines?
No, I, I believe what was removed was approximately three thousand dollars, which I thought was curious that it was, I think it was under supplies. I'm not sure what budget, which was weird because it's a policy. But we removed it just because we don't have the, the staff to conduct that effort. It's not that we're not going to consider that, it's just at this time, we, we just don't have the staff to, to undertake that.
So I will consider on my bent, continuing on my bent then. I have been harping as a former planning commission member on new residential review guidelines for each year that I've been on City Council. They were last reviewed in nineteen ninety-nine, and they are totally and completely irrelevant today. And as it is, we already know, folks who are designers, not architects, use the counter as their school. And we need more guiding tools for everybody coming. It is imperative that that be put on your list too. So I, what I see is we're loading on the items that you bear responsibility for, along with some of the other things that have been mentioned. I would really like to see us in our analysis of your department going beyond that additional planner and perhaps a halftime person who can assist with some of this, that are fairly high level, who can assist with some of these things that are way past due. And if they have the skill set to also be a planner, to assist with some of that workload. A number of us get frequent calls from community members. I understand the delays, we've got to be robust in trying to find whatever agencies we can. The state isn't going to back off. When I was last on the planning commission five years ago, the planning packets have doubled and tripled in size. The time to prepare those for the bodies that review them, your staff, the time for you to review them, the time that they take in meetings, that is only increasing workloads. So I think it's a much deeper analysis that needs to be done. And we don't want to set you up to become really frustrated. We want you to be successful and you have fresh eyes, which is great for us because you can point out some of your observations. But I think we really need to do a, a pretty deep analysis in looking at what we will need in going forward. Other than that, I don't have any other questions. So I, I don't know, this may not be the right question.
I have heard that at least a majority of you are willing to entertain a proposal when we come back in May for enhanced.
With some analysis, yes.
We will certainly do the best that we can in that period of time. So we'll, we'll try to bring something back as a proposal for you to consider in May, and you can leave it in or take it back out again if you want.
Thank you.
Let's go. Another question?
Please.
Which one would you prefer, another part-time or, I mean, two part-time senior planner or one full-time?
Can you repeat that real quick?
Now, do you prefer, I mean, if you have a choice between like one extra part-time senior planner, so having two of them, or just one full-time?
That'd be great. Whatever.
He's asking if you want two part-time people or one full-time?
Oh, I, I would prefer one full-time. I, I think it would just benefit the community more. It would also allow the community to know this individual and, and work with this individual. There'll be more consistency. I think having part-time workers, it's great. But I, I think in order for this group to function properly, you need that one permanent fixture in the community.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
And I'd like to add one more comment, since this year I'm visiting City Hall more often. The planning count, counters bedlam on a good day. There are just so many people lined up. If your planners have to fill in, they're detracted from the work that they're doing. So I would be in full support of co-locating them at a different location and building up your counterstaff. You can't get a good work product and not placing blame. I've been in a number of meetings where there's been some errors. And in defense of these poor employees, they're just really stretched.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do you have everything you need then? We're good. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next department, we have two more departments. It'll be Police Department, and this is going back on your agenda to page thirty-one through forty-one. Chief and Contro presenting the department.
Good morning, again, Mayor and City, Vice Mayor and City Council. I'm going to make this brief and hopefully this worked for you this time. First of all, I want to take the opportunity to thank you for allowing us to present this budget to you. It's a budget that my staff and I took some time in thinking about and trying to make the best ways to provide outstanding public safety to the community, to ensure that our officers have right skillsets and also utilizing technology. I also want to thank my records management supervisor, Angie Gonzalez, commanders, Tebets, and Blonday for working very hard on this. Also, along with Paul Chung for giving us great guidance and direction. As you notice, there's a seven point six percent increase in our services and supplies compared to last year. And we focused on technology, looking for ways to aid our investigative methods and also to increase public safety. The other areas that we looked at were training so we could improve the skills of our personnel, meet mandated training, focus on succession planning, along with development of personnel at all levels and including civilians and sworn personnel of this department. As you'll notice on the left side of the slide, we have a fourteen point three thousand use-of-force de-escalation virtual training. It's a innovative training program that officers will be able to use on their smartphones at work, and it meets requirements imposed. at work, and it meets requirements imposed and that the state legislature mandated for de-escalation training and policies within the Police Department. The next area is for an IT software for scheduling. We currently spend about 310 hours a year working on our work schedule with changes due to vacations, sick injury, or other items, having to replace personnel, backfill them. Also, and when assigning them training, it's all done by hand. What this software will be able to do is reduce the time that is spent by the supervisors, allowing more time to supervise in the field, provide leadership. And also, it enables the system, enables us to use text messaging for people requesting days off and also for training. And it will be automatically done rather than having to take the sergeant out of the field. The third is, as I mentioned, is something for succession training and also for development of personnel. There's two schools that in the United States that provide management, executive level management for law enforcement professionals. One is the Senior Institute of Management Policing, put on by the Police Executive Research Forum for which I'm a graduate, which is in Boston. And this other one is here at the Drucker School of Management in Claremont, utilizing the outstanding instructors, professors at the Claremont Colleges, along with some of the best leaders in law enforcement. And then finally, we're going to use some of our donation funds that we received from the public to assist the department and making the station look a little bit nicer and ensuring that the officers feel appreciated by the public. And that was the sentiment that the public made when I contacted them about their donations. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Udi?
No questions, looks very well thought out, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang?
No, no questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Shepherd-Romey?
I just had one question regarding the staff development at the Drucker School. I think that's exciting. Would that be an opportunity available to one person? And how is it determined who that is, I guess, in your leadership team? And is it something that we should consider as an ongoing, I don't know, future cost as well?
Thank you for the question. Actually, we'll be sending one person per year because of the cost, I want to spread it out. And it'll be whoever makes me happy that day. No, actually, we'll be basing it on seniority. I apologize for that.
Right, I just wanted to make sure there was a program in place to carry this forward. And if you have that connection and it's successful for this person, that that could be then something that others can perhaps stay and also benefit from.
Yeah, absolutely. As I said, I attended the school in Boston. And as a person has a graduate degree in leadership and management, looking at the curriculum from the Drucker School is a superior program. And it'll really help our staff, our senior staff, in developing their skill sets as new leaders.
Excellent. I was pleased to see that, and I think that's would be a positive for everybody at the department as well, to see that we're investing in that way for their professional growth. And it sounds like an incredible program. So thank you for bringing that forward this year.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anything further?
No.
Vice Mayor Taub?
Yeah, the only question I have is on the decrease, the one-time COPS funding. Could you remind me what COPS funding is and why it's not being rolled over?
The, I might need Paul's help on the decrease. The COPS funding comes from the state. We primarily use it for paying for the CAD RMS system that we have. And we do have some money that is available to us for other items and as far as the specific decreases here.
Yep. So for the COPS funding, we usually come to council separately as a separate item when they need a need to dip into the COPS funding. And we will ask council at that time to appropriate the funding. It's a one-time budget, it doesn't really roll into the next fiscal year.
Okay, I follow. Thank you. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
I have a few questions. So by removing animal control licensing from Pasadena to Humane, is that something that we won't be doing for the time being?
That is part of the greater agreement that we had with animal control. Dr. Marlowe had worked quite a bit, along with past Commander Rich Ward, on trying to come to an agreement, and that was part of the agreement.
Yeah, my recollection is that what they did is they took out the standalone licensing item and embedded it into everything else. So it's not actually a program change, it's just a change in the way that the money was done.
Okay, got it. I love those words, succession planning. They should be part of any well-run group, in my opinion, and I'm really delighted to see that. I notice for the cadets, we budgeted one for this year, but we are estimating two. I have found out recently that a number of our current officers were indeed cadets with us. Is this a tool that we can use going forward to perhaps increase our pool?
Absolutely, and to further explain the one, it is actually two part-time positions equally one full-time equivalent. And we have, excuse me. And my goal in that program, and when I arrived here in San Marino, I wanted to enhance their duties and their education about policing. And that is one of those programs that we have that I really rely upon for our recruitment and retention of our police officer personnel. They will have had a year, two years with us, and they've become outstanding police officers. We have one person who I'm going to interview next week about hiring as a cadet. And he looks like he is very well qualified for even a potential police officer position.
That's what I really like is when the cadets come to know the department, they know what they're getting into. They know when they apply that this is a place that they like. And it looks like we have success. And again, that retention word means so much. I hope that in the future you can come to council with a robust cadet program. So that might be a more viable channel in view of the change of policing in policing these days and recruitment for our city to have some solid candidates. So I'm pleased to hear that.
Thank you.
And I think I have one last one. Nope, all set. Anybody else, any follow-up questions? Do you have everything you need?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I did have one, it's not a question, I'm sorry, it was directed at Paul, Director Chung, I'm sorry. The workers comp in this area as well as the overtime, would that be COVID-related in part or in large part or any part? And could that be explored as something that we can get reimbursed through other funds?
Let me explore that with the other money that you mentioned.
I just wanted to point it out, it might be in both of our public service departments, thank you, or other departments in general. Thanks.
Okay, next.
Okay, last for minutes.
So welcome your interim Parks and Public Works Director slash City Engineer, Robert Newman, who we are delighted to have with us, who will be presenting Michael's budget for you today.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here. As has been noted, I didn't assemble the budget, but I have reviewed it, talked to staff and supported it. So just a couple of highlights for you. The overall Parks and Public Works budget is 3.7 million, which is a 1.6% increase from last year. There's two components of that. A portion is full-time staff, which will remain at 16. And then the services and supply budget, which will be 3.9% higher. The majority of that is related to the Mariposa Tree Service and Planning Contract that the council had previously approved, which is right at $100,000. And then there's actually a decrease in the budget and really a transfer of cost related to capital to more accurately reflect where those things are related to. So a transfer out of the services and supplies budget to capital of about 25,000. So overall, the increase is 1.6%. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Huang?
Actually, I'm looking for it. Can you come back?
Your page numbers?
Sorry.
Begin on 101.
No, I'm saying I had a question, but I can't find it right now.
Come back to you.
Yes.
Well, you know, I don't write out papers like you guys.
Councilwoman Shepherd-Romey, questions?
Yes, I don't know who this is better answered by, so thank you very much and nice to see you, Director Newman. On page 108 and 109 of our summary, we talk about here, the same language appears about transferring money out due to the multi-year Mariposa contract, both under parks and undergrounds. But I don't see, or I don't understand how that all folds together, because it these, neither one of these, if you look at the above, just the summary tables, don't really change much in terms to reflect $100,000 difference. So I was just trying to figure out, is it because it's entirely somewhere else? And we're just saying we've removed it, but then wouldn't these both dramatically drop by, between the two areas should come down by $100,000? If we parked the contract, you know, which is a significant amount, but we put it as in a different category of other contractual work. So I just didn't see any, if you will, any decrease or significant decrease in these two where I would think I would expect to see it. So maybe I don't understand how we're treating that money. So this might be something Paul can trace the moving target, but I would think that these two would drop in terms of services and supplies much more so than eight or nine percent, and the other one going up just by 20%. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I get you. I apologize.
Okay, no, I know, that's why I'm saying, maybe Paul can help.
I certainly could not research it, I don't know. We'll look at it and get back to you.
Okay.
Get it now, and then hopefully I'll get back to you.
Okay, if somebody can, just because I think we should see realization of some savings if we're putting it in a different, but I just didn't see it here. So I wanted that 100,000 to be accounted for, or next year's approximate a change to be accounted for, increase and decrease. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's the main, and I may have something else, but please go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to go to Councilmember Udi. He informed us before the meeting that he would need to leave soon, so I'd like to hear what questions.
I think the department's running really well, so thank you, Director Chung.
Thank you, Marcela, for being so persuasive to get me here. I should have had her negotiate my wife, because.
And I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang, do you need more time?
No, actually, Councilmember Shepherd-Romey will re-ask the question.
I did have a follow-up before you finish.
My apologies, go ahead.
No, no, no apologies, but related to the Mariposa contract, which I was speaking of, do we have any person on hand or who will be, I guess there is no person right now, perhaps because the urban forester position is open, however, to provide oversight on that? Because I have seen some interesting Mariposas service people watering some trees and then just parking their car in town. So I'll just say it like it is. And so that concerns me with, again, we're in the situation where we invest in a lot of new trees and not all of them are watered, it's kind of, you know, happenstance. And so even though we have a contract of professional services that is new and that they'll replace the trees, I still don't want this to be a continual that trees fail. I don't know, just by way of background for you, a lot of small trees become twigs because they're not watered, and we've always, but we built that into this.
Very critical in the first couple of years.
Right, exactly. So that's part of the services, and I'm already, we were only in, this was in March, and the tree had just been planted two weeks or three weeks earlier, and it's already going to be a long summer ahead of it. So I don't want that to go on and be the one that follows the truck around to find out.
We wouldn't want that either, but we could have staff that's following up. Mariposa just finished planting the reforestation last week, so we'll follow up.
So just, I think there should be a map that identifies those, and then if somebody on staff can be a quality check for their work, make sure they're doing that before we get into the hottest part of the year without any water, because I'm really worried that we're already going down the wrong road. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Taub?
Yes, thank you for coming and helping us out. I, it's tough to run that ship over there without a rudder and without a captain. And I feel very comfortable knowing that you're there, working hard and working with our staff. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to direct this question to Paul. To let you relax just for a second, but I do see that in, it is confusing this Mariposa contract, because I look at that grounds division budget summary table. It says an increase of 100,000 to cost center. And then you say, beginning in 2023, the entirety of the city's multi-year tree maintenance and planning agreement with Mariposa, less 50,000 paid out of CIP funds. So what was the total amount of the Mariposa contract?
Give me one second. One second, I actually have that flagged.
Right, I think the annual cost is over 120 or 130, but again, I don't know where they're putting, it's on pay, well, no, it's routine.
Oh, it should be in that summary, the contract. Mariposa. Root tree. You have it under several, you have routine tree pruning at 22,000.
So the Mariposa landscaping contract is 364,850.
Right, page 152 of R is the very last page of this entire section. Other contract services under Parks and Public Works, Grounds.
So what Robert is telling me is that the Mariposa contract for next year is $414,000. For budgeting purposes, we budgeted $364,000 in the operating side, and then 50,000 is in the capital side.
And so that 360,000 is throughout the parks in grounds?
No, it's in the grounds budget.
Okay, so it's all in grounds now?
Yes. So before, next year, it's all in grounds. And you'll see that in, I mean, we have the account number, but it will be in the other contract services in the grounds division.
Okay, so that.
Okay, top of, or the middle of page 123, where it says other contract services.
What we did previously to the current year, we used to split the Mariposa contract between parks and grounds. Right, parks and grounds, but now we're consolidating it for next year, all into grounds division. And then a portion of that 50,000 is in the CIPs.
Okay.
Yes.
And so the overall cost increase, if I'm looking at, you zeroed out 49,000 out of the Parks Division Budget Summary Table. Yes, you took out 50,000. And yet you added 100,000 up here, so that extra 50,000 is from the increase in the contract?
Is the total contract increasing by 150?
100, total annual contract is increasing by 100. 101.
Oh, Ken forgot his notebook for next time.
Yeah, he did.
Forgot it's from
Is he right here?
I think no, he's I'm trying to look back to previous meetings. I believe when the Mariposa contract was approved, we talked about, we talked about the increase at the time. So that should be in here. I'm just trying to find it.
Well, I, look, I'm not going to waste everybody's time. I was just, and perhaps we should get just Eisenhower memo on that. And, and just so we could see where it's all being budgeted, but
What I could do for the council is next Friday, we have our second budget study session. I will come back to the council regards to the breakout of the Mariposa contract and the budget question regards to how that budget impact is for next year. I think that will help provide that.
This section or whatever, that would be helpful just because it is confusing. And like I said, you'd think there would be a decrease. So I just don't know then what the rest, what increased equivalent is.
I could do that for the council.
Thank you. And thank you very much. It was nice to speak with you about this.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I'm not.
I had the same Mariposa concern. So with that, I have no further questions. Do you have everything that you need for Park and Public Works and going forward?
Yes.
Okay. At that, this point then, we are going to move on. Does anybody have written communication or public writings for distribution? No, no, okay. And I will ask about public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? I see nobody live. Do we have anyone online?
There are no requests or comments.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor, if I might just offer, so for next week, now that things have shifted just slightly, there is a, I believe there's a contract extension that'll be on your agenda for next week for Iteris so that they can complete their work. You will have a second reading of the ordinance related to the commissions and boards and committees so that that can go into effect. And then we will come back for round two of the budget, which will include fire first and then a presentation by community services on both Director Johnson's vision for what this year will include as well as the budget presentation, much like today. So that's what next week is shaping up to look like, followed by a closed session.
Thank you. Dr. Marlowe, I have one more question. This past week, I participated with Mayor Cattiani from South Pasadena and Senator Portantino about the possibility of some leftover state money at the end of the year to possibly pilot the mobile crisis program we had talked about. And Senator Portantino was asking if we each could offer something to that, if he could cover the majority. Our council of government suggested amount for San Marino, is there some way that we could have a discussion within council to see if that's something that we would possibly like to allocate for the next fiscal year?
And what would be the appropriate way to do that? Well, your agenda has already been published for next Friday.
I mean,
I'm sorry to interject.
No, go ahead. Please, always happen when you interject.
Yeah, is this, is this, is this essentially an additional request to potentially include in the budget?
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah. So I think that's part of the budget study session already. Yeah, I think you can just bring that up as part of the budget discussion.
Like, as she just did?
Yes. And then if there's any background material that you want staff to gather or provide, that can be done as well.
Then if, and if there's consensus on that, much like the other item, then we could include it when you consider this at the end of May.
Thank you. Do any council members have any special adjournments today?
Well, actually, yes, I do. A lot of residents complained to me about they find like dog poops in their front yard, dog poops, you know? And so they complained that a lot of residents, walking dogs not coming up afterward. Yeah, what can we do about that? Because they
Well, we can certainly make the announcement in the weekly
Yes, so we can certainly remind people, Councilmember Huang has raised this issue with me recently and also ironically, a couple of years ago, raised this issue in terms of actual enforcement, unless we catch them in the act. There is really nothing we can do about that. The options would include putting up signs, putting up additional trash, trash receptacles. Those create some additional issues. Most residents don't appreciate the additional signage, even though they're concerned about the deposits. And the potential challenge with additional trash receptacles is that then adds additional work of receptacles that need to be cleaned. And we don't really want to get people in the habit of thinking that all they have to do is turn around and there's a trash can right there. They really should just be bagging it and taking it. But we can certainly get some additional messaging out.
And I don't think we want.
Oh, Vice Mayor.
I don't know. I'm thinking about telling the, the residents that they complained, you know, the ones that complained, you know, maybe they can form a, we can form a committee and let them run and then they can go after these.
They can run on the dog poop platform.
Keep a mobile force out there.
Yeah.
Okay, but we can certainly get that in our
Sure.
At least let's, let's do something so the residents can see that we're trying, you know, it's not like, oh, you know, we can really catch them.
And perhaps the Tribune might indulge in sharing some little piece.
I'm sure he'd be delighted.
Okay. Anything else in terms of special adjournments? We certainly had our tribute last week and anything new? Hopefully not. Okay, with that, the meeting's adjourned.